Speaking of the microphone, please. All right, we'll call this meeting to order. Janet is conveniently stranded in Costa Rica, so we will proceed without her. Okay, so we'll just jump right into the presentation by the Utah County Sheriff's Office, Deputy Dustin, or Dutson. I don't know if it's you that's making the presentation, or...
I all started.
Very good. Thank you for being here.
Okay, well, thank you for allowing us to be a part of your work session this evening. Again, I'm Deputy Garrett Dutson. I'm the deputy that's over the small contract cities, and that also includes Woodland Hills. Tonight here with me is our Sheriff Mike Smith, Chief Deputy David Oliver, and Lieutenant Sean Cowden. My bosses, so we'll put it that way.
Don't screw it up.
Yeah, don't mess up. So, first off, we just really appreciate Woodland Hills and their ability to allow us as a sheriff's office to patrol your city, to address any criminal issues or just law enforcement issues in general. And so I'm just gonna give you the stats of 2021, just so you understand, like, our call volume and some of the other stats that come with that. So in 2021, we had 595, what we call CAD calls. It comes up on the computer system. Either that comes in through our, someone calling into 911 or non-emergency, or a sheriff deputy themselves actually initiates a detail. So out of that, the public-generated calls was 325, so that means they called into dispatch. And then 270 of those were generated by a deputy themselves that were in the city. They saw something and generated that. 270 cases came in through a deputy that was in patrol here, either doing an extra patrol, or they came across a traffic accident, making traffic stops, things like that. So, out of that 595 calls, 179 of those actually received a case number, so that means the deputy did a report on them. There was 14 arrests out of that, and the average response time tallied up was just under 15 minutes, was the average response time. So that's the stats for 2021. If you want me to break it down to more, like, kinda what a majority of those calls were in that, then I can do that at a later, later time. And then in December, I realized that, that's the week that I had COVID. There was an issue that came forth to the city council regarding a, an incident where a citizen had called in regarding someone banging on their door early in the morning. They said 3:00 in the morning. A male was saying, "Hey, this is your dog." The resident was saying, "No, this isn't my dog." And I guess the, the male kept saying, "This is, isn't this 145, house number 145?"
You don't know.
Was the next door.
Yes, sir.
Then the information was that it, that it took the sheriff deputies an hour, and someone else even mentioned an hour and a half for the response time, which concerned me. And I know Carrie contacted me, and I looked into it, and I just wanted to make sure that we had correct information. And just so everybody knows, when someone does call into dispatch, they start what's called a call number, or a call CAD number, and then that logs the time. And if a deputy's dispatched, or a fire's dispatched, it logs everything that we do. So when the deputy arrives on scene, when they clear the area, if it needed a case number, so we can see all that that takes place. So in doing some research on that, I know, I think Carrie, you might have brought it up at the first of this month here, but with that, the, the call actually came in at 1:39 in the morning on December 5th. Deputies were actually dispatched at the same time, 1:39. A second deputy started to respond at 1:41, and that second deputy arrived in the area at 1:48, which was nine minutes later, arrived in the area. Later, the primary deputy arrived in the area, and at 2:00, they cleared due to not finding any suspicious vehicle or, or male in that area. And most of the time on a suspicious, when we get it, if it's a suspicious vehicle or person, we'll get in the area and we'll patrol that area. You know, we'll go around the surrounding neighborhoods just to see if we can locate them. And if we don't, we clear the area, unless the reporting party tells dispatch that they want us to make contact with them after we're done checking the area and things like that. I know the citizen had brought that concern up, that they weren't contacted. In the dispatch notes, I don't see anything in there that, that they requested contact. But that is something that, you know, as any profession, we learn to grow and, and learn from things, and if that's something that we need to... I know that, that is something that's been pushed out to our sergeants, to encourage their, their patrol deputies to, if they can, make contact to get maybe further information and stuff like that, so. And I know timeframe, I don't know the resident, I mean, banging on the door at 1:30 in the morning wakes you up, and you're not quite oriented of what's going on. I know for myself, when a medical call comes out, and I get there, or a traffic accident, I'm not super good with medical stuff. I'm like, "Where is medical? Come on, medical." And it seems like it's forever, and it was five minutes when you look back at the notes. It's like, oh.
We did have a question with regard to medical. Our EMT captain said that, that in order for them to enter a home, they have to wait for one of your deputies to come up and allow them to go inside, and sometimes it has been a long wait. And so we wanted to make sure that that is addressed too, because we want to have as quick as response time as we can, and yet we're not actually sure what the protocol is that for a medical call.
So, and that's, uh, do you want, Deputy, Chief Deputy Oliver, he'll address that. That's something we want to address. And I've also spoke to create the fire chief on this issue, so. So, at that, I'm going to turn it over to Chief Deputy Oliver. He'll address some other things, and then probably just open it to you guys for any questions. We kinda wanna, you know, we got a new mayor, new city council members, returning city council members, older city council members, and we just wanna be, make sure that everyone's... I wasn't...
You're the old guy.
David, I guess, David and Carrie, we just want to make sure everybody was on the same page and understood what the sheriff's office does offer and what our contract goes through. So I'll turn that over to you, Dave.
Thanks for meeting with us. This is not just because of the December mission, or... Plan, Lieutenant Cowden and I plan to get with all of our contract cities this year and talking to them. We've had some changes in our pricing with our deputies, something that we've gone across the board with all of our contract services. We've upped our prices, which we haven't done in 10 years, so that'll be coming in there too. But just wanted to kinda address some of the misunderstandings or misinformation I heard in the last commission, or the December commission meeting, and just kinda get some facts out of you guys, so you can understand what we have and how we work and what we're doing. You guys are contracted for 25 hours a week. Sheriff Office responds 24 hours a day, 168 hours a week to all calls. The coverage does not stop once the contract of 25 hours is up, expended, and any response time by a deputy who's not assigned to Woodland Hills is not counted towards your time. So, you know, we're coming up here. Now, you guys know that sometimes there may be a delay in time, and you guys talked about it last time, about as far as getting one deputy out and the response time of that. And I'll get into that a little further in a minute. What the sheriff's office has available for manpower in our critical incidents, as you guys remember the fire, and you guys remember maybe the avalanche, some of the other major storms you've had up here, this is what we have. Our enforcement division has three lieutenants, five sergeants, and 33 patrol deputies. We have access to our larger contract personnel, which is three more sergeants, 26 more deputies. We also have, in our investigations bureau, one lieutenant, three sergeants, one victim's advocate coordinator, five people in property crime detectives, four SBU detectives, that's our special victims unit, five narcotic detectives, and then four victims advocates. Those are gonna be there to help during deaths and traumatic experiences. Our specialty teams that we have here are 50-man SWAT team, eight-man K-19, 40-man public order team, 20 of our volunteers for the Jeep Patrol and VIPS, including all of our specialty equipment that we bring with that. And that could be armored vehicles, that could be our high-rescue vehicles, and all the equipment and training those people go through, those specialties, and it's substantial. Our special service division has two lieutenants, three sergeants, 64 SAR members who are volunteers, a 20-man horse posse, 30 communication specialists that are on our TERT and SCAP teams, and we also have the special equipment and training that goes with that, and that is substantial as well. So with those, little explanation of how we work. The sheriff's office patrol bureau has three, has a sergeant and a patrol team on almost all times of 24-hour shift, except between the hours of 3:00 a.m. and 8:00 a.m. The reason why we don't have them, those are our low-call ba, volume hours, so we try to put our manpower where it's best. When only two deputies are on, a patrol team consists of one sergeant, four patrol deputies, one K-9 deputy, and either one ACO deputy. During that 24-hour shift, the two sergeants and their two patrol teams will, will work two opposite 12-hour shifts. We work 12-hour shifts with overlapping coverage between 3:00 and 8:00 p.m. Those are our high-volume hours for traffic accidents, people coming home from school, coming home from work. There's a lot that goes on in those hours. There's also a rec sergeant and four deputies on every night, and their assignment is for the recreation areas, but they can be utilized to come in and assist on patrol, utilize them to assist on, you know, bigger incidents, traffic accidents, things like that.
Do you see more trouble on weekends?
Generally, yes.
Okay.
So during our past critical incident responses, the sheriff's office has maintained 24-hour coverage in those areas, namely the fire here. We had one or more deputies in this area protecting property, evacuating people. We send a lot of resources very quickly, and we call out more than 30 deputies at a time to assist in these patrol responses. Eagle Mountain had a huge blizzard several years back, so did Highway 92. We called out everywhere, all the cities up there, and everything just now there. So Woodland Hills currently has a time deputy, a full-time deputy, a deputy rate of $53 an hour. Our new deputy rate, 67, that's something we charge for contract, across the board. Doesn't matter who comes in, contract city, a movie contract, any contract that is hiring a deputy, that's the rate we go to. We have some more figured later on with that. Just wanna kinda answer some of the questions that I heard come up, some of the comments that came up in December. I know there's a concern that you guys share your deputy with, you know, cities far away. I also heard about services being down since the last contract was signed. I can just tell you this, when Sheriff Smith took over, his priority, being that, and I worked with him prior to that in Pleasant Grove, he's in community policing. He's big on citizens. So am I. When we took over the patrol division, Lieutenant Cowden and I sat down and talked about how we could give you guys better service. And the best way we figured we could do that, prior to what we did, is a deputy would work a couple hours here or there, but he was assigned to a patrol team. If a major incident was called out, he would have to respond to that. He couldn't dedicate himself to the time here. He also didn't have a flexible schedule. They're on a set schedule, they're gonna work either a swing or grave a day, and those days alternate every week. So with, Lieutenant Cowden and I, we figured that if we took our Elkridge City contracts, and we took our smaller contracts, and then Woodland Hills' big contract, we combine those with those two deputies, have them work off shifts, gives me more manpower out during the day to assist with other calls if needed, but it also gives me an opportunity for your deputy to come up here and specialize in this. That allows him to come to your city meetings, that allows him to come to your city events and functions. It also allows him to bend and respond as your crime trends, you know, come around. You may be having a speeding problem in the morning by a school bus, he can make his shift adjust for that. You may be having vandalism, or thefts in the parks, other places at night, construction sites, he can fit his schedule to that. With that, him and the Elkridge City deputy have been asked to work together and allowed, you know, come out here in numbers of two or more, to be able to get more effective and give you guys better service. So that was the reason why we did that. The only way I could do that and justify having him assigned strictly to here is by pulling him off a patrol team, so that he had those contracts. And that was the only way I can justify his wages, by adding all those contracts together. Elkridge City, they fund their officer, their deputy, and so they're able to do that. Deputy Dutson, he's a great guy, and he does a heck of a job, and we're lucky to have him here. And so with that, again, it allows him to have the flexibility to meet your guys' needs, to be able to change, adjust his schedule. We asked him to give us a three-year contract commitment, and we won't hold him to it, but we ask that they do that and they keep that in mind. You guys had JT before that, he did a great job. He got an opportunity as a detective, he's been wanting one for a while. I wouldn't hold that against him. Deputy Dutson had an opportunity to be a detective two months ago. Pushing for him, because they want good guys, and you guys have worked with him, know he's on top of things. You call him at home, you call him in California, you call him wherever he's at, he's gonna answer that phone, and he's gonna give you guys that level of service. When he came and talked to me about it, I says, "If you want it, I will support it." He said, "I don't want it." I said, "I do, but I told you I wanna give a three-year, and I want the cities to feel that continuity of me being here that long." So he turned down prime position to maintain this job here. That's the kinda character he is. That's the kinda people that we're trying to put in these spots. We're looking for, you know, go-getters, self thinkers, that motivated, who can please people and understand, you know, the politics of cities. And so he does an exemplary job of that. So with that, you guys talk about deputy coverage, coverage after 3:00 a.m. at night, there's only one deputy in the county. There are actually two. I have a north and a south deputy. Now, that's not great numbers, and we're never happy about it, but that's what we have. But with that, that doesn't really affect, you know, the money you guys are paying. You guys are paying for one deputy 35 hours a week, or 25 hours a week, I'm sorry. And so, you know, when we're sending deputies up here, that could delay the response time. There's no doubt about that. We don't like that. If our deputies are responding from, you know, a south end deputy, maybe up 6K, SR6, way up the canyon, he may have a half hour, 45-minute response. It's not ideal for any of us, but that's how the whole county has to put up with. I live in Elkridge, I have the same thing. I pay for a full-time deputy, and I get, you know, 43 hours of service a week and 86 hours a month, or every two weeks. And when those guys aren't on, and they're not on all the time, I'm waiting for a deputy to be available to come and respond, and if he's coming from the west desert, or wherever it is he's at. So with that, along with that... So when we look at supplying you guys with 24-hour coverage, it would take four deputies and one sergeant, and that would be minimum mandatory. That's not taking into account vacation days, that's not taking into account training days. That's just bare minimum, four deputies, one sergeant, they'll handle most things to keep you guys 24-hour coverage. So that would be $770,000. I heard a comment about sharing a deputy at Elkridge. That was a conversation Lieutenant Cowden and I've had, trying to come up with ways to give better service. We heard you guys had talked about maybe getting a full-time deputy. So with that, we figure if we went and talked to Elkridge, and then talked to you guys, and had it work out right, that deputy would be responsible for Elkridge and Woodland Hills on his shift. So he may be an Elkridge deputy paid by Elkridge, but he's available directly for Woodland Hill calls that day as well as his own. And then when Lieutenant, or Deputy, that's gonna give you a promotion, is on his, his shifts, he's opposite of that other deputy, he would be available for Woodland Hills calls and also be able to go to Elkridge. Since the cities are so close, we just figured we could keep a response time up here and increase your service levels. That's why we did that. It wasn't for any other reason, but we're trying to look at ways to increase your guys' service levels, keep your costs down, and give you the best service we can. And so those are just ideas we're coming up with. And again, when I, when I came up the idea of making, you know, a specialized deputy for contract cities specifically, it was so that you guys could have someone that's flexible in their schedule, very committed, and have the ability to attend those meetings, adjust his shift, or his days off even, as needed, and be able to put special tip, offset crimes free or other things. Also offer, you know, community services as far as being coming around at one of your guys' city events and stuff. Deputy Dutson and Deputy Coffee have both been trying actively to get, once you have, you know, equipment for, tell me about it, your drunk cars and goggles?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So we're just looking at trying to get that, like, an event trailer put together that when we do go to the city events, we have, we got these pedal carts that we just got to demonstrate what happens when someone's impaired and they're driving. The kids, even some adults can get on these. I can get on it, but, uh...
We haven't, we haven't told him this yet, but there were budget cuts, and that's gonna be his new trouble.
Yeah. I'll be pedaling, but you put a course up, and they, they drive through the course without the goggles on, and then we put the drunk goggles on and have them drive through the course. They understand that, but...
It's really great for us, for kids.
Yes, yep. So there's some other things we wanna do. We wanna be a part of your city events and have some, a venue going that they can talk about law enforcement and public safety in general, so.
One thing that Sheriff Smith talked to me about when he first came in was community programs, community policing, but community programs do help build those, and I've asked both Deputy Dutson and Coffee to look into and find, you know, sorts of programs that we can, we can offer to help make the community stronger. So the one thing I will say is that, under Sheriff Smith, and under my own, Lieutenant Cowden's vision, is that we want to increase and build these. We've met with the old mayor prior when there were other issues, and came up here and was able to set things straight, and, you know, make sure we, everybody's on the same page and seen the same way. And we really appreciate that about her. That's what we're trying to do here today. Again, we were gonna try to have this meeting for this, just about, you know, upping our prices and trying to, you know, test the waters where you guys are at, as far as our service. But I, I don't think you guys were fully aware of the services you guys were receiving from us, and, you know, what we do bring to bear here when we come here, so. Do you have any...
You wanna talk about medical?
Oh, yeah, medical, I'm sorry. Not miss that one. So again, any medical call that obviously has some sort of violence or risk on it, you know, our EMTs, our paramedics should hold back and wait until law enforcement's on scene to make it safe. Smaller medicals, where you don't need our assistance there, you know, you don't need us to even get in.
How do you determine which is a small, which is a hard?
It's pretty obvious.
Dispatch will call out, you know, either a gunshot wound or a violent fight, you know, something like that.
They'll categorize it.
Okay.
And so medical knows that.
Suicide's that way, too.
Okay.
And so, you know, for stuff like that, and I got it written down right here, I got somebody knows this crazy right here.
So for the most part, you're saying the, our EMTs can go in, because it's just a regular old medical, but if it's something that's more of a violent crime, or needs investigation...
A potential violent, yeah.
Well, so, so to answer that question, that's, that's your policy, not ours, right? So if your, if your EMTs or fires said, you know, we won't go in, that's, that's not the, we said.
Oh.
Definitely for violent actions.
And if it's a domestic violence or suicide, we don't, there's a weapon involved, you know.
And our EMT captain knows that.
Yes.
So on those codes, our deputies will run, on those calls, our deputies will run code, that's license sirens. They're gonna get down here as fast, as safe as possible, and, and they know that, it's a priority call. But also, you know, after 3:00, I may have one deputy out in the middle of the day when Dutson's not on, it's gonna be wherever the nearest deputy's at that can respond. So that's, that's the issue you might have, you might have longer call times, but on average, just the regular calls, 15 minutes, if we're running code to it, depending where they're at, you could have a much quicker response, so.
You'll, you'll see that policy fairly standard across the board with, you know, the risk level of the calls. You know, anything that, that hits a certain risk, then they should hold back. But for the most part, you know, most of the cities, you'll, a normal medical will come out, and it goes across the CAD, and officers say, "Hey, we're not gonna respond to that because of the level." So those, those are pretty standard operating. And then I just wanted to put out also on that, you know, just working in the different cities, you guys are really, I mean, you're smaller, but you really know different. Even in cities that have their own police department, there are times when, you know, the things like mutual aid will come up, there's, there's always gonna be that time, there's always gonna be that conflict where, you know, something's happening somewhere, you know, that, that pulls their officers away, and, and you're asking, you know, you're asking another neighboring city, "Can you help us? Can you come over and grab this for us?" Those things happen, so you're gonna have the one-offs. Hopefully that's not very often, and we're gonna do everything we can to minimize that. I, you know, I feel bad that, well, I, I hope that the explanation that Deputy Dutson has given helps explain the complaint, but I guess our ask would be, you know, on these type of things, we're not here saying it can't happen, or we didn't make a mistake, but if it does, if it does, you know, come to us, we wanna fix it. But always, usually, let us look at it. There's another side to the story as well, of what's, what's really going on behind the scenes. And I can tell you as a sheriff, you know, I, I, we're here to serve you. We, we, at the end of the day, our goal is to make sure that Woodland Hills is safe. But at the same time, you know, when it comes to the budget and everything else, I'm, I'm held to, you know, where I'm using my resources and where they're allocated. And I, I look at the contracts. One of the first things I, I did when I came in is I asked for an audit on our contracts. And there's a lot of things that, you know, was, we're trying to clean up, we're trying to get everything standardized. I was, I was really surprised that it seems like everybody had a different con, I mean, it's completely different, right? I'm like, how can we have all these different contracts with different, you know, but, so we're trying to standardize all that, we're trying to get everything taken care of. I do believe the sheriff's office provides a valuable resource to Woodland Hills, and we would love to continue to do that. But I guess as the sheriff, my ask is, is at the same time, sometimes as a city, you know, I work for a city, sometimes when people say, "Well, how much law enforcement do we need?" You know, budget rules that sometimes, right? But the level of service that you want is the level of service that you need to pay for. And sometimes it's not always, "Hey, bag on the sheriff's office because they didn't get up here in time." Sometimes it's like, "Well, citizens, maybe we need to have a serious talk about what we're paying and where we wanna go from here." If we're asking for a higher level of service, we can't just say, "Well, the sheriff's office stinks and didn't get here in time when we're not paying for that type of service."
Right. So Sheriff, can you tell us what, what that added service, right now, is it two-thirds or three-quarters that we're at with the 25 hours? But what additional service, just time, if we went with full-time? I mean, it would just be more, more time on the ground in, in the city if we went to a full-time deputy? Is that the only increase in our, in our services? Everything else would remain the same, just more time?
Yeah.
So that's what we need to consider as we're looking at our budget.
And I think it's, I think it's important when you, when you say full-time, that there's not this, when people...
24 hours.
Yeah, they think, "Oh, we're gonna have a deputy up here full-time." Well, you know, you may have a full-time employee here in the city offices, well, are they here 24/7?
Only Jody.
Yeah.
But other than that, yeah.
Full-time doesn't mean that you've got full coverage in your city.
24 hours, yeah. Well, and I think that, that lends itself to, to our discussion as a council on what, what we're going to pay for. And the sta, the stats that you read us at the beginning, I mean, I'm just being honest and, and asking, is that, that coverage, I mean, that amount of incidents worthy of a full-time deputy, or are we good for where we're at? I mean, I know you want us to have a full-time deputy, but if we're not having as many incidents, then maybe it doesn't do you any good but to come and chit-chat with us.
Let me answer it this way. It's probably not fair, I don't think it's fair for us to set that standard for Woodland Hills. I, I honestly believe that question is for Woodland Hills to answer. Woodland Hills is to say, as a city, what level of service do we want for our city? What can we afford, right?
Right.
Where are we at? What level of service? What's our priority on this? So, you know, as a, sitting as a sheriff or a chief of police, very often, you know, you get that question of, you know, "Well, how many officers do we need?" And for me, you know, you've got, you can see what your minimum, if you're really talking 24-hour coverage, your minimum is there. But again, it goes back to the city and to look at the city and say, "Well, you know, city, citizens, what level of service do we really want?" So...
Well, I guess maybe we should compare ourselves to some of the other contracted cities to see how many incidents they have based on, on population, to see if we're in that same category. You know, 'cause it's hard to know if we've gotten calls for dog barking versus, you know, a real serious crime.
Yeah, and Deputy Dutson can break those down for you.
Yeah, I think I will do that. I think I'll break it down, and maybe next city council meeting, I can, you can see those numbers. From abandoned 911 calls to animal problems to assaults to DUIs, things like that.
I think, I think part of the, part of the problem in, and I'm speaking very generally, but in today's world, you know, everyone, everyone is a student of the internet, and therefore they know it all. And so it's, it makes it very difficult, like, the information you gave us at the beginning of this meeting was awesome. That was great. It gave us the informa, exact information we need. What I'm wondering, and I know this is another ask, but is there any way we could make that available publicly so that the student of the internet... the internet who's just sitting there, you know, and have the, the response time as one of those calls so that they can get the information? So we, we don't even get to the point where we're having somebody call the city council saying somebody wasn't here for an hour and a half, when in fact, yeah, they were here within nine minutes.
To publish that kind of information out, it took a lot of work to extrapolate that from where we have to go through dispatch and then our, our program, our programs.
I get that.
And, uh, better probably at the per-call level if there's an issue. And again, we're not perfect.
The, the general, like, Deputy Dutton just read off, though, your, your average response time is this. And, I mean, some of those get skewed because you're looking at a couple, right, that happened, you know, late at night when you didn't have somebody here, that maybe you had a 30-minute to an hour response time on a low-level call that's skewing the majority of your calls were really like seven to, you know, five to 10-minute responses, but now you've got these outliers that, that pull them out. But maybe that could be broken down a little bit, too. But those generals, I think, you know, probably not, I don't know, on a weekly basis.
And if we had another, like, case that's bringing a lot of attention, yeah, that's something we can do. We can break that down, almost like a, a case by case.
Yeah, I think, I think what I, uh, was speaking to is maybe a long-term project that would make that available, you know, something in the next year. So I, I'm not expecting it today at all. I'm a software engineer. I know what it takes to put that kind of information out and it is significant. It's a lot of work. But I think that's kind of the world we're heading towards, you know? People, you know, used to read the, the newspaper to find out all the dispatches that took place and they, now they read Facebook and it, it's just a different world. And so the more we can put out good quality information as opposed to letting them get their information from Facebook, I think that that benefits all of us.
Something, I, and I've noticed that Elk Ridge does it and I think, uh, I wouldn't mind starting to put something in the newsletter.
That's what I was just going to say.
They publish, uh, Deputy Coffey puts together just all types of calls that they respond on. There's like sometimes 20 different calls that they respond on. So, you know, like, there was 10 abandoned 911 calls, there was five animal control calls, there was two traffic accidents. And so you can see every month, see as a city, um, what type of calls we're responding to.
I think we should get those as like a sheriff's blotter, right?
Yep, just a sheriff's blotter that you, we could put in there every week and, and then.
Just have those numbers.
Or a month.
Have the numbers and, or if you want to write up a little something that, yeah, once a month is fine. Uh, write up a little something if you want people to be aware.
You want the sheriff to write that?
Yeah, sheriff's blotter.
But, you know, but if there's something that you notice, I mean, you know, I always ask you, is there anything that you've noticed that we should highlight with our residents? Uh, because sometimes when you're just here all the time, this becomes so normal that you don't really realize that it's an issue, um, unless you have some clamor, but, um, you notice things.
Yeah, we can address like when school's back in, just beware, school buses are out, kids are out and about, Halloween, some safety tips there.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean.
That red sign needs stop.
Let me just say, this, this isn't unique, by the way, to the sheriff's office. I mean, we're having this, the same kind of an issue and, and the more, you know, we're, we're struggling with getting enough information out to our residents, um, on other topics, you know, building permits, building, um, activity, road activity, water activity. I mean, it's, it's a constant never-ending and it's because we live in this world where, to be blunt, people are addicted to data. And because of that, they want it. And when they don't get it, then they go to less reputable sources, AKA Facebook, and they get it there, but that's just crazy data. And so we're trying to, we're, we're, we're trying to get more and more information out to our residents so that they have it on all kinds of different topics. This is just another one, so.
And to your point, I think that, uh, you know, striking that balance, I mean, because I, I think on the one hand, if it's a huge burden and, and you're devoting vast resources just to dump a ton of data, uh, into our laps that then we just put out there that, frankly, in my opinion, very few people care. I, I think people like the high points. I think the blotter is a, a good balance of, of all those things. It sort of appeases our morbid curiosity about what's going on in our community and, uh.
Help that you are what's going on in your community.
Yeah, yeah, informative.
Certain types of crime laws will come with pointers on, like, construction.
Yeah.
Trains are getting hit. Homes are getting hit. Make sure you're well-lived, lights are on all night long, your motion sensor lights, always shut your garage door. You know, those things will come out and so that helps educate the community about what's going on.
Yeah.
And so.
I like that. Okay, let's start that then. If you want it in for tomorrow's, let me know tonight.
You know, the only, the only thing you have to do is you, you have to write it in such a way that it rivals what used to be the, the police beat on the Daily Universe. By far the most entertaining section of that entire periodical was the police beat.
True.
Uh, four bikes stolen.
Can I?
I got the people looking.
I'll have one for March. Is that what we're looking for?
Sure.
Because the newsletter is coming out for February.
Well, we, we put it out every week. So you can put it up, you can give it to me every, before every Tuesday, whatever day you want, just before Tuesday. Yeah. We just do a short thing every week so that it makes it, so we don't have this huge long thing.
And then, so I'll, I'll bring something else up that, uh, just so you guys are aware. So, um, some of the city staff knows that I'm in training right now. I'm in my third week of six weeks of, uh, canine training. Um, the sheriff's office asked me to carry a bomb detection and tracking dog with me. So, um, his name's Jack. He's a Brittany Spaniel and lots of energy. So we're going through lots of training and during that training, your city is covered with, uh, deputies that respond to those calls during, during the time that I'm in training. And then we've also requested, uh, extra shifts to be covered on the weekends. I, I'm out. And I actually came out Saturday and patrolled through the city, so.
Thank you. Well, we appreciate it.
Just so you're aware of that.
We have residents who serve on, on search and rescue. We have residents who serve on the SCAT team and, and so we know that there's, there's some good things that are happening on, on both sides. We're, we're not giving you as much as you're giving us, but we appreciate all that you're doing for us. And, and Sheriff, you have to know, he is doing a great job.
Oh, you know what? He was, he was, he was put up here because we knew he would do a great job. He's, he's a, he's a huge asset to the sheriff's office.
We'd like to meet your partner sometime.
All right, I'll bring him in.
Yeah.
Yeah. We're going to talk about, um, what was it? We're not keeping the dog on a leash and off a leash and what the laws regarding.
Well, I think the sheriff's office is exempt from any of those anyway, so, whatever you want.
Councilmember Malkovich.
Yes.
Address you properly. Um, thank you for saying what you said because, you know, really from, from core, we want to make sure that Elk Ridge is happy with our service.
Withland Hills?
No, I'm sorry.
I don't care about Elk.
You're being recorded.
I want to make sure that they're happy with our service here. Um, so I appreciate you saying that, you know, that, that there's more than those 25 hours that are on that contract. And, you know, I, I have the potential to get beat up for that. I want you to know that.
I know that.
Because, um, I will get accused of, of things and, and I won't go any further into that. But I want you to know that, um, we, we want to help you and there's, you know, besides those 25 hours, there's things that go into this that, um, you know, if, if something goes beyond into an investigation and other things that, you know, you're being taken care of and.
And we let the commission know that, just so, so you're aware, is that we do talk with them, at least I talk with them quite frequently about your level of service and how much we appreciate you and, and, uh, we will continue to do so.
So I, I want you guys to know that. We appreciate the relationship. And if there's things that, um, that we can do to be better, um, just, just ask, you know, we'll, we'll do everything we can to be better. And, uh, and just our ask back was, is for me at least, is just to understand that, you know, there are going to be some things that, um, that happen that, you know, a complaint or something else, come and talk to us and, uh, we'll work through it. And if there's something we need to fix, we'll fix it.
Thank you, gentlemen. Uh, we appreciate you coming here. Oh, sorry, go ahead, Doral.
Oh, yeah.
We're not done.
I haven't even started. Um, first of all, you've had deputies up here for years that I've watched and I've really liked all of them. There've been some really great deputies, uh, serving us. Uh, Sherry Rhodes, uh, Petro, if you remember her, she was a dynamite. And, and this guy falls right in line with being the best of the best. And, and we see that especially in he see, we see extra services to our community that, that only he has ever done. But, um, I have a question for you and this is kind of, and I don't know how you'd answer it, but the city council sometimes picks a few trivial infractions, if you will, that we want a mandatory ticket written. And I, and I know you, you like to keep that up to the deputy. You like to have the deputy decide that. And, and, and yet, uh, and, and I'll just list both of them. One of them is fireworks used in the city. We, we just feel like that should be a mandatory ticket. And, and you can respond to me and tell me why I'm nuts, but, and the second one is, is, is we went to the expense of putting up signs in our cul-de-sacs where people are parking and throwing garbage out and, and they're, and they're noisy and they're late at night all day. And, and you go up there and you see paraphernalia that I don't like around. But so what, how would you respond about, you know, if we do get you called out, you do catch the kids parked up there or you do find fireworks were lit? What, what are your feelings about mandatory tickets, uh, in those situations?
Yes. Is that directed to me?
Whoever, whoever can make me.
I'll answer it from my perspective is, um, we will, we want to do, uh, we want to do what you're asking, but at the same time, um, I personally believe that anytime you're going to do a mandatory and just say, under any circumstances, this is what you're going to do is a mistake. I think we can have a directive that says, you know, we, this is what we want, but taking complete discretion away from every situation and incident. And I know of one of them that became an issue over the last summer and when it was looked into, it wasn't, there was, there were some things that came into play that weren't as straightforward as just saying, hey, the deputy wouldn't do this.
Uh-huh.
So, um, we, we want to work towards those things, but at the same time, um, I think you do need to leave some, some discretion in there depending on what the circumstance is and, um, but we can definitely have a heavy emphasis on enforcement in those areas.
It's, it's just that sometimes it's so hard to catch them. And, and, and we noticed when you did write tickets for middle-of-the-night parking, boy, that problem goes away. And, and there's residents in this room right now that are witnesses with me that, that saw this working much better when tickets were written. The word gets around, you know? And we don't want to be, you know, and I appreciate, and I agree, the deputy should have that final say in the matters. It's just hard to, to be successful in our efforts in the long run, you know, in some of these things.
And there's differences there, too. A parking ticket is different than, you know, a firework ticket. A parking ticket, you know, it's, it's really, you parked there or you didn't. And is it, is the signage right? Is it, you know, is everything in place? The ordinance, then, you know, some of those things, then I, I probably lean the other way of, like, the ticket every time. If you're parked there, get the ticket.
And we feel like we've done all of that, but thank you for answering. Uh, Gene?
Craig, did you have a comment?
Yeah, I just wanted to say that we did turn in some of our ordinances, like fireworks, fires, into their city attorney. So they're working on them and hopefully that makes it easier for the deputy, uh, when he does come up.
There, there is a, with your ordinances and stuff like that, we, we realized that, um, we got to go through the county attorney's office for them to give us the clear for those to go into what's known as the state court system. So we have citations that pull up on our computer and when we type in Woodland Hills ordinances, they're not there.
Yeah, we're working on that, too.
And we could handwrite that and submit it to the courts, but they'll dismiss it because it's not in there. So myself and Craig and Carrie have, have, uh, submitted some. Lieutenant Cowden's been trying to work with the county attorney's office.
I've been trying to work with the county attorney's office as well.
We've been trying to work with them.
And I've also been working with the county commission because they didn't even know this was an issue. And I, so I have it on several.
Does this have anything to do and do we need to look at it from a process standpoint having to do with codification? Like, should there have been a bit of the codification that got redirected to a different system or something like that? I mean, again, that, sorry.
Maybe, but, but it, it, this, they were able to write tickets before and then only more recently it has come to our attention that the county attorney's office isn't going to allow them unless it's in their system as well. And so.
And I, and I hear you and that's why I'm asking this question.
We have to submit them one by one, the ones that we want them to enforce. And so I, I don't think that's right. So I've talked with the, the, uh, county attorney's office and count, and the county commissioners, and we're trying to see if we can get it through faster. It took Elk Ridge, what, six months or so to get some of their things through? Yeah, six months for just a handful. And so we're, we put in our most, our, our most pressing ones to just get it started, but I'm hoping that we can just knock down a door here pretty quick and say, no, this is not right. We are a contracted city and our ordinances can pop right up.
Where is, where is the, um, the roadblock? Is it the county attorney's system?
Attorney's office, yeah.
Is it their, their electronic system is just terrible?
They review them and then they put them on the system. Because you can't go to prosecution or justice court unless it's in the system. That's.
Fair enough.
Until that's dumped in there.
But what I'm saying is what, what's the five, six-month holdup for a handful of things?
They just reviewing your ordinances as well.
So in other words, the county attorney wants to review our ordinances for legality and then they will put them in the system. Is that what I'm hearing? That's an interesting process. Okay, we're going to have to talk about that.
Yeah.
They're the ones prosecuting. They're the attorneys.
I get it, I get it.
And we pay for their pro- we pay for the court system. I mean, we're, our contract isn't just with, with having a deputy here. It is also for the court systems and everything else. And that's why they want them to integrate. So I think they were thinking that this would be a more efficient way to do things. And in reality, what they didn't come back is to all of the contracted cities and say, this is what we're doing. Because we didn't know until, um, until, actually, you came along, deputy, that said, oh, well, we can't even do this because if a deputy comes on site, there's like two of our ordinances that show up in the, in the committee. I mean, on the site.
Are they good, too?
No.
No, they're not even two good ones. And so. And so, so that's, that's the problem.
And all the two things they can't do.
And so.
It goes in the blotter.
Actually, what we're really looking to catch are all the people from outside the city.
Yeah.
So we don't want them to know.
So this is something that I think that because it's more recent in the last couple of years, is making sure that not, that we don't necessarily need to be road blocked, but that we can go forward.
I would recommend that this issue be brought up to the county commission. I think this is not the county. I, I hear you. I want him to do it.
Yeah. So, I mean, to me, it seems like we've got to understand what their process. I mean, are they reviewing it for legality? Are they reviewing it? I mean, it is strange to me, too, that there's another layer of sort of codification. I mean, it's sort of making our laws impotent, uh, if there's no enforcement.
Yeah, and if the, if the county attorney is essentially doing another review of an, of these ordinances, I'll say it that way, because I'm sure it wouldn't be all, but it would be, you know, certainly s- a, a fair chunk of our ordinances, then we need to be on that sooner rather than later to get those done. And we need to get the county attorney to give us the time that's necessary. If they're, if they're going to impose a review on our ordinances, then they have to be willing to put the time in.
I think that, yeah, I, as an initial step, I think that it's important to understand the nature of their review. Uh, so, but I can look into that and then reply back.
Thanks.
I wanted to add one other thing on this. Um, Deputy Dutton, I have spoken with about this very thing, uh, where, you know, officer discretion does come into play. That's the benefit of having a deputy up here that's spending his time up here and understanding issues.
Yeah.
And having that buy-in. Whereas if he was just a patrol deputy, he only spent a few hours here, he's not going to have that. That's why Deputy Dutton has that. And that's one of the benefits of what we've done.
Yeah.
With that, we've talked to him and if you guys have issues come up, once we're able to do, you know, prosecution on them, you can contact Deputy Dutton and have him look at it. And it doesn't mean guarantee he's going to go right that side, but if information's good and he has the understanding that the deputy who may have been here at two in the morning didn't have, uh, parking issues or fire issues or, you know, just made to understand that political climate here or the, you know, the physical climate. Deputy Dutton can review that and then he can long-form those initial sites if he feels that they're correct. So.
And just, you know, me personally, I agree with your, your approach. I think, you know, we, what Doral's saying is we need to be able to say, look, these are huge issues. We, we mostly want them prosecuted. And then we need the deputy to be able to say, uh, yeah, but this one, no. You know, all the others, yes, but this one, maybe not, you know? You know, all the others, yes, but this one, maybe not, you know? They weren't doing what somebody said they were doing, or whatever it is. I think common sense is something that we need more of in this world, and I, I trust you guys to use that.
And I appreciate that, because, and I want you guys to know that we, I am aware of, especially with, with fires and fireworks, right? I'm very much aware of how important that is to this community, and we want to do everything we can to support you in that, and we will.
Yeah, thanks.
Doral, anything else?
Thank you, thank you for being here, you guys.
Ben, you got anything to, so these guys, maybe no speeding tickets for you as you're going down Woodland Hill Drive?
No, I'm, I'm good. I, I figure if I don't have anything to answer, I won't just talk for the sake of talking, so.
All right.
We appreciate you guys, thank you so much.
Yeah, thanks for coming in.
That is a question. If I'm a city official on the way to a city meeting, can I get a speeding ticket?
Well, I just found out recently that I can pardon you if you do.
Oh, wow!
I have the authority to pardon.
But that's only if it's within our city, right?
I, I would assume so.
Don't pardon Dave.
I did a little bit of speeding on my way.
Well, if you didn't get caught, you didn't do it.
I did not get caught, thankfully.
All right, so moving along, we have a proposed ordinance amending City Code 10-6 regarding the appeal authority. We did talk about that some last council meeting, and hopefully you all, Craig and Ethan, they did provide some proposed amendments to our current ordinance, and we're, I, I just wanted to get it in front of you, the, the proposed language. I still am a, a, a big advocate of this. I think that fielding a team when it comes to our appeal authority is very difficult, and I just think that this provides a better solution. I know that Wayne gave some good input on whether or not we want to have it statutorily in the alternative, where we can have a single-member appeal authority, or at the mayor's discretion, the, the same five-member panel. In my opinion, I think that it's better to just not look back, to, to move on, because, you know, a, a, a large number of cities are moving in the direction of the single outside-party appeal authority, and I think that it's a good idea for us to follow suit. And I, I would just as soon not clutter up the statute with language for alternatives.
So, I don't have, I, I didn't have a problem with any of it. I, Janet wants somebody to speak for. The only question I had was, there's a couple of places where it's red, and I didn't know what that meant, so I wanted to have that question answered. And then the other question is, does this need to go through the planning commission for approval, or is this something that the city can simply approve, the council can approve?
I believe it's something that the council can approve.
You, too.
Wayne's nodding his head.
Okay.
Just need to go to the planning commission.
The only reason I asked is it kind of in a remote way applies to land use, but it's...
No, good, good, good question. So, I am, I, I have...
And how would we, Mayor, my question is, how would this person be chosen? And it, are there people that, and, and this isn't a full-time job, this is just a, an additional responsibility for someone who has expertise in this area? So, is it, do we just contract with them for whenever we need them? They meet just a few times a year, if even that, right?
Yeah.
Currently, but I think it does lend itself to then our citizens not feeling that pressure as, as people, as, as just neighbors and friends, so I like the idea of taking it outside of the city to someone who is qualified.
And, and, and there are a number of attorneys that, I mean, this is not necessarily their sole area of practice, but it is a part of what they do. In fact, Vaughn Pikel, he, he is in our city, he does it for a number of cities that are not Woodland Hills. So, there, there are attorneys that practice in this area, and so I think that it, it will be a very well-developed, and I think an easy transition. Dave, to your question, I, I actually must have left the redlined version of the statute, or the ordinance, the amendment, on my desk. There is one section in there that is noted as, not discretionary, but that it could be left out, and I, I do, in my reading of it, it seems like it's unnecessary. I mean, I think that, you know, we, we, we don't need to, again, clutter up the fairly clear purpose of the ordinance with a bunch of contingencies that don't seem to apply to us. And then there are a few typos in there, you know, we'll need to, to capitalize. And then there also needs to be some, we need to make sure that it's reconciled with the other ordinances that refer to the appeal authority, but what you have before you is basically the guts of what we would propose.
Yeah, so, I, I, I would say for me, I like the direction, I think we're heading in the right direction, let's just finish it up and...
Okay, I'll, I intend to have that next council meeting. I was hoping to have it today, but it seemed like it was...
Honestly, this is awesome for this, for this short a time. It is great.
Well...
If it's not too expensive, and I don't think it will be.
Yeah, and, and that's a good point, because I think that the fee structure associated with our appeals needs to take into account, one, that we're hiring an outside attorney to conduct the appeals, and then I also think that we need to, I, I mean, I'm a patent attorney, the Patent and Trademark Office, they limit the number of pages that you can submit, and if you go above it, you pay an additional fee. And so I think that we need to address, you know, if, if we've, if we've got an attorney that's reviewing this and has to spend 20 hours just to pour through all the documents that are attached, there should be a surcharge that's associated with that, so the city just doesn't pick up the tab. So, and that, that's something that I think we can pretty easily do.
And the fee would be associated with those issuing the appeal in the first place, so, we would, or are you saying that we would pay for a certain amount at the beginning, and then they would pay anything additional, or would they pay something upfront to, to start the process, and then anything over that certain amount that we set, they would pay additional?
Yes, so it, it's, it's basically the appeal fee. So, the appeal fee would have to be adjusted to account for the fact that we're now having to hire a professional to run the appeal, the appeal hearings, and then we would also want to, in my opinion, put a cap on the number of pages that could be submitted as part of that appeal process, and then anyone that wants to go above that, which it would be their right to do, but they are going to have to pay the added cost that the city would incur as a result of that.
Okay, can I share Janet's, what she's been saying?
Oh, yeah, please.
This is strictly, I'm going to read it verbatim. So, I'm going to have to board the plane in a few, so I wanted to give you a comment on the appeals committee slash officer. I want to go on record that once citizens start intimidation tactics by sending letters to people's homes, then we are compelled to make a change. A line has been crossed, and I don't think our citizens who serve on that committee should be subjected to such treatment. That is not okay. And then the next comment was, time to hire a attorney who is not a citizen.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Janet, wherever you are.
She's a default user. She hung up.
All right, if there's no further discussion on that, we'll move on. Planning Commission update. Wayne, take it away.
We, to follow up, you sent to us a request for zone change. We had a public hearing on that, and our recommendation is to approve that, but you'll be, you'll need to have a public hearing on it as well. So, I just kind of giving you a, a heads-up on the status of that particular zone change, and that will be business that you'll be taking care of in weeks, a couple of weeks forward from this. There was a, we have a conflict in our ordinance having to do with review of site plans. One section of our ordinance indicates that the planning commission and building official will review those, which the planning commission does not, but members of the planning commission do. And the other ordinance found in a different section indicates that, that members of the planning commission, together with the building inspector, review the site plan. So, that will come to you for, for approval, to change the one that's out of sync with, with, with the, with the correct wording in our ordinance, that the building official and other reviewing official, which is either one or two members of the planning commission, so that we make that in sync with our, we, we line that up with our ordinance, so there's not conflicting language in there.
So, that makes sense. The only question I had was just looking at the language itself, not the fact that it's in another part. Is, is that really an "and," or is it, should it be an "and/or," or should it just be an "or," or, like, do we always want the building inspector and the other assigned review official? Or could it sometimes be just the building inspector? You know what I mean?
Yes, I do, exactly. That issue was made during the codification, and the council at that time agreed that there should be two, to agree to, to not having one of the requirement, or one or more of the requirements of the site plan. So, that would be, the building official is always our public works director, he reviews all the site plans, and then a member of the planning commission, whether it's one or two. So, two people would need to agree to excluding one of those items from the site plan if, if they didn't pertain.
Okay, thank you.
We also, for your informations, moved on, motion to, I'll continue to be the chairman of the planning commission, and Larry Henry is the vice chair. And that was the same last year, and that same motion was made to carry forward with this coming year. And we will continue to have our meetings on the third Wednesday night, as we have been doing, and that will continue for this coming year. Those were matters of business that we, we did as part of our last meeting.
And thank you and Larry for your devoted service.
Thank you. Okay. Any questions?
Okay, Councilmember Malkovich, we've got the resolution confirming support for science-based conservation, restoration, and enhancement of Utah Lake.
Yes, there's been a little bit of controversy going on with regards to certain proposals around the lake. And that, in the legislature right now, there is a bill that just got numbered today, that's the Utah Lake Authority Act, that will go through establishing the Lake Commission. Instead of a commission, it would be an authority, and certain people would take, take a role, active role in that by legislative statute. Woodland Hills would not be included in that, because we don't have any borders surrounding the lake, but we still have a vested interest to make sure that it's handled properly. We may be given an appointed position, depending on how that board feels, but with that, there's also a separate, a separate proposal out there called the Utah Lake Restoration Projects, which are attempts to clean the lake, et cetera. And there's a variety of proposals out there. The main one is one that, yes, does dredge the lake, and yes, uses those dredgings to, to build islands in the lake, to help with some efforts with, with the wind action. There's a lot of wind action. There's also a need for some, as more cities are going to build around the lake, as population grows, there needs, there needs, there, there is a need for more migratory, migratory bird refuge. And then there's also a proposal to put in an island that actually has people on it with a bridge, I guess, going across to, from Orem to Saratoga Springs, to lighten that load, because they know that the rest of the lake will become populated. With that being said, two different, separate things that are going on. A lot of information is out there that is partly true, partly not true, and so as a Lake Commission, meaning representing currently every city in this, in the county, I wrote this, this resolution with the help of the, the executive director, and we took it to the governing board last week, and it passed unanimously, and each city was then asked to take it to their city to pass, that says that we will confirm our support for science-based conservation, restoration, enhancement, so that there is no doubt in anyone's mind that no one's going from one side to the other at this point. Things with the Lake Authority make sense to all of us. We've had our, our input in that bill for two years now, and we feel like it's a good bill, and so we're, we're supportive of that. The Lake Restoration Project has to go through federal process, EPA, NEPA, which is a two-to-three-year process. We don't want to get in the middle of the process, so we're saying with this, that as a city now, we would confirm that as, as a member of the Lake Commission currently, that we support that particular effort to go through, and to allow the processes to go through, without us taking one side or the other. And so that's why I'm bringing it today, is that as Lake Commission members, we were all asked to take it to our city for approval, and I wonder if you've had time to look at it, and if so, if you have any questions.
I didn't have any problems reading through it. The, the only concern, and I assume when money is going to be spent, and it's expensive to dredge a lake that size, but...
It's all private.
Oh.
It's all private at this point.
Then, then we definitely should support this.
Yeah, we are, we are not asked to give anything at all, ever, and, and that's why it says that, you know, that contains, combined with sound scientific review, because NEPA is a very, very extensive process, and no money from us, it's all, all private money.
Just being good neighbors, we should support this, in my opinion.
Any other questions?
Yeah.
Go ahead. I said no, no questions, so carry on.
You did?
Yes. Just trying to move the meeting along, no. Thank you, Ben.
I'll just be honest, I have mixed feelings about this. First, I don't see a strong need for it, period, for us in Woodland Hills to pass a resolution having to do with Utah Lake, but there's some of these wherestes that I'm not really a fan of, and so that just gives me pause as well. The, anyway, I don't know who we're actually supporting with this resolution, and that concerns me, because there are some definite sides to this issue. One is basically leave the lake alone, and the other one is, let's develop the heck out of the lake.
Well, I would disagree with that, but going forward with some of your other concerns, what this does is it recognizes us currently as members of the Utah Lake Commission, that together with all of the other cities in our county, we agree that we want science-based conservation. We don't want any willy-nilly stuff happening. We want to make sure that if restoration projects are brought before the federal government and the state government, that, that it is sound-based, and that we, we confirm that we support that science-based application. And so going, what we're trying to do with this, is the reason Woodland Hills is involved in it is because we are one of those members. We are one of the members of the board that have a voice in what happens at the lake, and will continue to for quite a long time. Our residents use the lake, they are able to do it for recreation opportunities. Some of our residents work in other cities that have things that have to do with the lake, and so I feel that our voice is really, it is really an important aspect of who we are, not to just say, well, we don't really care, because we don't have lakefront, isn't really a good argument in my point. I, I think that we, it is, we need to do our duty and also show, there's not, we're not picking sides here, that's what this is showing. We don't need to pick sides going forward. We need to say that we, we are sound-based, scientific, and that we will let the process go forward.
Yeah, I mean, this week I got sent a survey from somebody. I don't know who it was regarding this very issue.
Yes, there's lots of surveys, and there's lots of stuff going around. Some of it is not correct.
I, I don't disagree with you, that's the way it is with anything, but, you know, I'll just be honest, you know, over... over the last two years, I've heard nothing but we should let the science dictate. And honestly, it's really become a trite phrase in my mind. I don't disagree with it, and that's why they say it. Is because it's a difficult phrase to say, no, that's not right. Well, it depends on whose science we're really talking about as to whether or not we agree with it. So that's why I'm hesitant to move on this until I better understand what it really is. And I'm not sure I have that.
Well, there are several scientists that are opposing in this, and that is the case. I sit, I am the vice chair of the technical panel, which is all the scientists and the that have projects going on at the lake, and we meet quite frequently. There are a number of scientists out there who claim one thing and some that claim another thing. You are right. And they can prove, just like with anything else, based on their science. And that's why what we're saying is let the process go through because NEPA, as a federal process, will not just take one side or the other. They will look at the facts and they will go forward. One of the things that we don't want to do is to have either side come and convince a city, you need to take our side on this. Because I don't think that's fair to the process. And I, as a policymaker, would want to make sure that all sides are heard. I have heard this discussion for over five years now, and it's coming to a head because the Lake Restoration Committee did send their application to Washington, and it was filed at the beginning of this month. And so the opposition to that has ramped up, I would say. And that's why, as a Lake Commission as a whole, we felt that it was important to put out a statement in solidarity that says, okay, as cities, we don't need this extra pressure from either side to say, support me. But to say that we agree with the political process and that we will allow NEPA to go forward, and that as the legislature goes forward allocating funding for whatever they're going to do, then we won't stand in the way of the process, and we will not pick sides. And I feel that that's in our best interest as a member of the Lake Commission and as someone who represents our city. That's why I brought this. And again, it passed unanimously with every city in the state. After we reworked it and did a few things to make sure that it was well-balanced and not really favoring one side or the other. So I would ask for your support in passing this resolution.
All right. Any other comment? Thanks, Gary. Okay. Mark, you still with us? I see you up there. So we have the appointment to the Public Works Committee.
Okay, yeah, I'm here. I think I'm unmuted. Okay.
Welcome.
Thank you. So the appointment to the Public Works Committee is we had a member resign to actually take a position on the planning commission. That was Ted Mickelson, and we've been vacant for a little while. During our vacancy, we did have both of our councilors step up and help us fill some of the holes in that. When Paul decided not to run again for election as a city council member, him and I did talk, and he thought it would be a great place for him to continue his community services on the Public Works Committee. That is something that I thought was a great idea. You know, that all being said, that appointment is actually by you, Mayor, and your discussion with the council. So that would have to be an appointment that you would have to make. But I would certainly like the idea of having him on. My understanding is that's who you're looking at putting on this, in to fill his position.
Okay. Well, I certainly have no objection to Paul serving in that capacity.
He wears thongs on his feet, but that's okay.
Yeah. Well, I don't think they call them thongs anymore. If Paul's wearing thongs, the city council.
They were called that for a long time when I was growing up.
But the sheriff named the wrong person old.
Paul would be great if he's willing.
Yeah, no, I think so too. So I'm fully in support of that.
If you guys, if you don't mind, could I kind of get back that Utah Lake item that you were discussing a little bit ago? Kind of listening to the conversation, you know, there unfortunately, I guess, there are two different types of sciences that get involved with a project like that. There's your data science, your civil science, your engineering science that, you know, it has its differences amongst itself. But then there's the other darker science that usually runs the show, and that's called political science. And I'll just leave it at that.
I would agree with that one, Mark.
Very succinct.
Okay. And so moving along, Mark, you also have a proposal from the Roads Committee to do a drainage study.
That is correct. Check my stuff here. We, during our November meeting, and Mayor, at the time you were mayor-elect, I believe you listened in on that. We discussed it with both our engineer and our public works director. They are both probably in a better position to talk about this than I am. But the after discussion, the committee wanted to make the recommendation to the council that we do enter into a into a study to figure out what our best options are for stormwater drainage going forward, trying to find the recommendation that was forwarded to Jody for this. And I'm looking for it, and I know it's here somewhere. I'm just looking in the wrong spot, that's all. Bear with me for a second. I got to find it again. Yeah, that's not it either. Oh, I hate when that happens to me. I thought I had it saved here. Here we go. The, you know, the committee, the recommendation is, and it may very well be in your package, I don't know, but the Public Works Committee, after their meeting on on November 30th, we had, the committee did discuss the stormwater challenges facing the city. The committee voted to send a recommendation to the city council. Council, upon suggestion, view at the time as mayor-elect, the committee chose to wait until the new mayor and council were seated before sending a recommendation. I did send it over last week. And the recommendation is as follows. The Public Works Committee recommends that the Public Works Stormwater Subcommittee, along with the staff and engineering, work together to define the best action plan for the city's storm, stormwater drainage challenges. The defined action plan will be sent to the city council for their possible consideration. And I've actually changed the wording on that to, instead of being defined, to developed. So replaced defined with developed. That was the recommendation that the the committee is sending over to the council for consideration.
Thank you, Mark. So.
Could I speak to this just a bit?
Please do.
So this issue has really come up recently with the storms we had back in September. We had a lot of water coming off of primarily the end of Summit Creek Drive. But we had water coming off of Woodland Hills Drive. We had water coming off of a bunch of different places. And as you may or may not know, it is our legal obligation that if rain falls in Woodland Hills, it stays in Woodland Hills. That's the basic gist of it, is that it has to stay. So in order to better understand where our drainage is going and, and make sure that we're able to contain the water that's coming down, Ted Mickelson mentioned, but it was a really good idea, that we do a drainage study. Now, one thing that I think would help tremendously is we're seeing development further and further down the hill. So all that development around the state center, we have storm drains, but they're primarily for the roads and cul-de-sacs. They're not really meant to take the water off the hill and put it anywhere. And that, that's a shame. Had we, had we thought about stormwater when Four Seasons was being approved, we probably would have had the developer put in a drainage retention basin. Where? I don't know, but that probably would have been in our thinking. And so that's really what this drainage study will help us do, is identify where are the big places that we, as further development takes place, that we can put these retention basins so that we can start holding our water.
And I know that the cost was raised as one sort of point of consideration, but I also recognize that, I mean, it's not, I mean, it's not really even optional. I mean, I guess we could guess and try to patch something together, but it just, I mean, we have an obligation to prevent that water from going down. So it strikes me as part of our essential services that we as a city would need to offer.
Yeah. So I think, I think a good idea would be to let the Roads Committee at least start moving forward and getting an estimate on what it would cost.
Okay.
So that we can have that number as part of our budget discussion.
As I was going through the campaign also, this was probably one of the biggest topics that were raised from residents of the city that collectively covered the entire city. And so I really do, I agree. I think this is something that we should do.
Thanks.
Ted, can you tell us about how much that would cost to do a study like that?
Yeah, you know, it can vary by community, community, and how, how much the study's got to entail, but you know, generally for an engineering study, stormwater, and for this community, I would call it more of a stormwater management plan. And, and like David indicated, it's the duty of the city to retain any increased runoff that the city creates. And this, this came up because of some legal issues that the county is going through. And they haven't brought us into it yet, but it could happen. So it's, it's, it's something that I think is important for the council to seriously consider and and move forward on and act on. But generally, you're talking probably, depending on the approach, you know, a study like this could be thirty to fifty thousand, you know, doing an engineering study, stormwater. And that's just round numbers. There's a couple of ways you could approach it, possibly cost a little less. Could be a little more. And in the end, what you get is kind of a a plan that tells you how to, what the issues are and how to tackle, and costs to tackle.
So can I ask with respect to, I mean, it's sort of a moving target, it seems, with new developments coming up. I mean, does it take into account subsequent developments and how they would impact, or is that something that is done by the planning commission as far as far as a subsequent impact study goes? I'm just curious, because I, what I don't want to pay fifty thousand dollars for something that will be useless because it's outdated because of new developments that, you know, are start feeding into it.
Right. And usually what can be developed in these is what we call design criteria. So generally, it's up to a developer to manage their stormwater by building facilities. And that's what, what you see around communities with detention basins. They're built by the developers to manage their increased runoff from their development. So in these stormwater management plans, there is the criteria that's developed that then the developer can use to determine how he's going to manage it for his development. So it's not the so it helps the city continually be proactive in those developers building those facilities as part of their development. Now, in someone down in Summit Creek, probably didn't get as much done, Robert Nelson's, he's, we, recently, they've been doing sumps down there for their smaller areas. They've been putting in some sumps, and we've been reviewing some of their drainage analysis, but, but for the most part, it hasn't, you know, hasn't been done. But in, I don't know if the city right now has any criteria for a developer to follow on how to do that. And so I think that's part of what needs to come out of the plan, is that criteria for a developer. In other words, the specifics are what storm event are they to design to? What are they going to detain? What kind of facilities do we look for? And information they can use when they're designing their developments.
So are we basically trying to catch up over the years of us never, you know, looking at this? Is that kind of what this plan would then be? And going forward, we could for agreements and things of that nature?
And that's, that's correct, man. This is really part of, part of us catching up because as the cities develop over the years, there's really been no stormwater management put in place. And, but we continue, you know, we've continued to put homes and, and rows in, which increase runoff from the hillside because of the hardscapes, and it's impacting communities below us. And so we need to do our due diligence and catch up for what's been done, and then put the criteria in place to continue that momentum forward.
Yeah, if there was flooding, you know, in that farm field that used to be farm field, nobody cared.
Correct.
But now you got a house.
Yep.
People care now.
And in addition, if you remember after the fires, we were, one of the things that we were asked, well, compelled to do, I guess, is to pay seventy thousand dollars to the county for a tri-city retention basin there at the corner of eleven, two hundred and Lofer Lofer Canyon Drive. And so our portion was seventy thousand just for that without a study. So it probably would do as well to have a study going forward so that we can show that we have displaced our water onto our own city property. Now, Ted, my other question is, if we're spending fifty thousand, is this a one-time, one-year study, or is it spread out over time so that with, as we go into our budget hearing, that we will know if we're allocating that all this year, or if we're dividing it between this year and next year?
Typically, a study like that will be done in less than a year. And so I would, I would plan, you know, it's hard to, hard to, right now, it's even more difficult to determine schedules because most, most people are really busy, but the city operates on a fiscal year, right? So it depended on when the project went out, but if it were if it were budgeted for next fiscal year, I think it'd be all completed within that fiscal year. And this is part of our due diligence to the county, too. Corbin and I had a meeting with the county public works director and his assistant some months ago, and they were the ones who said, you guys really need to be doing something and acting on this. And so I think we've got to show some action as a community that we're, that we're moving forward on something so that we can demonstrate this to the downstream communities and the county.
So you think, what time of the year is the best for this? I mean, obviously, we need to go when someone is available to do it, but is it better to do it in the spring with the runoff just just coming off, or is it better to wait till midsummer or fall?
For an engineering study, engineering studies all through modeling, so it doesn't really matter the time of year. It can be really done any time of year. This isn't, this isn't actually doing the work. This is doing a study to try and figure out what the issues are, how severe they are, and what can be put in place to manage the issues and the cost to do that. So you know, it would be a study, and studies don't matter. It can be any time of year.
I've spoken to Corbin a little bit about this. Did you want to throw anything in there, Corbin?
Yeah, if I could. Concern is when Ted throws out thirty to fifty, get Ted to commit what the deliverables will be for the thirty and what they'll be for the fifty so that you realize what you're paying for, because you're not going to get fifty thousand dollars worth of design and engineering for thirty, just so, just to make sure. But also realize that, you know, when we talk about downstream, you know, communities, the only thing we have to deal with is post-development flows. So historic flows have always been there. They've always gone that way. Those guys, just like we require hazard assessment done before you can build a house, that's basically what a developer does when he looks at his development. He looks at historic flows. He does a study about, you know, that shows how much water's coming off, how much water he's going to have to deal with to pass through his development, which are historic flows, and then the difference between historic flows and post-development, which means the impervious services that he creates because of his development is all that developer has to deal with. That's why Robert Nelson doesn't do a bunch of big basins. He does a few sumps because the sumps will handle the post-development flows, which is all he has to deal with. The issue we come, the issue we have is we don't know what that is. And so without the study, you can't, you can't prove that your post-development flows are no greater than historic flows. And to me, that's where the liability comes into it, is if you don't have any study, if you don't have a study that's been done, and you don't have any documentation to support what you're doing, if anything, and you leave yourself pretty wide open. And I think that's where we are today. Also, when you consider this, considering the ordinances, how, how we can encourage encourage developers to participate. One of the ways you do that, I mean, you see parks that go in all the, all over the place. A lot of times those parks are a secondary use to a retention basin. So the parks will be down in a hole. Well, that, that, that is an incentive for the developer to participate by creating a secondary use. Get the developer to do your work and then give the developer something in return. We don't really have a lot of that in our code that allows what we would call a density bonus. So developers to help participate by offering them something for doing your work for you. And, and I think that needs to be considered seriously because it will help get done what needs to be done without putting the burden entirely on the, on the homeowners, residents of Woodland Hills.
And it could be a great sledding mill.
Yeah, absolutely. We need a berm around a basin up there. I, I want to put a rope tow on it.
Yeah. You've clearly never ridden a rope tow. All right. Thanks, Corbett. Um, Ted, as far as the bids to Corbett's point, uh, is that something that we can get if we, uh, make a, some sort of a RFP that we can get, uh, sort of a sliding scale as to what we'll get for our, our money? Obviously subject to some flexibility.
Yeah, so there's, yeah, there's a couple of ways to approach this. Uh, one would be to put together a request for proposals. And, and send that out, you know, advertise it publicly for engineering, engineers to solicit or to propose. Um, generally putting out those RFPs and you put them together, you kind of outline a scope for them to put together their fees. And then you also want to understand their qualifications and all that kind of stuff. I, in engineering world, it's, it's not really, I mean, we look for the cost, but it's not just a cost that we want. We want to know their qualifications, their scope, what they're planning to do and that kind of stuff. We want to, so we put out requests for proposals. Um, and either one of two things, I, I mean, if that's the case, I, just being involved in the things we're involved in in the city as part of the city engineering, we'd really like to, you know, like to help with that, be part of helping put that RFP together. Um, be involved in the selection of engineers that can do it. Because I, I know good firms out there and I also know firms that aren't so good. So, you know, I'd like to have some, some say on that. Um, we also have a lot of information we can provide because we've modeled now in our company as part of either the mitigation project or other development we're working with. Um, we've modeled pretty much every drainage from Lofer Canyon over to Maple Canyon now. Um, I could just got done modeling Maple Canyon and we're meeting with some developers who are building down there. And for that same reason, they're building detentions. So we're helping them figure out how much over there in, um, Dave's property. So, um, so I'd like to be involved with that just to help. And that's why I say it can vary on cost because if, if we can provide them some good information, you know, we can help them along without them having to develop so much.
Okay. And so all we're thinking is just determining whether to take it over to the Roads Committee for further development?
And I, I think what Mark's, um, recommendation was is that be assigned to the Roads Committee staff and engineer to put together the RFP and a roadmap to getting it, someone selected to do that.
Uh, yes, Mr. Mayor, what, uh, it was, uh, the, the wording was, was designed to allow a, a little bit of latitude to, in, uh, with the city staff and engineering to come up with the best proposal to, or, or, you know, to develop the best action plan. So we can sit down, uh, with, with staff, with engineering, uh, with, uh, with council liaison and whomever else needs to be involved, uh, planning commission, and actually work through the best actual plan to move forward. Does it make sense to, uh, to involve our engineer in this? Does it make sense to RFP for another engineer? So, uh, we would like to take a little bit of time and just actually come up with the best plan be- before presenting it to the council for, for the council's consideration.
Thank you, Mark. Uh, Chris, I see a cartoon hand raised.
Yes, thank you. Um, just while Ted's working on these proposals, I'm wondering if we could get a proposal for a new water impact fee, a possible police impact fee, fire EMS, parks, stormwater runoff? And just look at the options that we can have with the impact of new development through impact fees.
And we need to make sure that we check with that with our attorneys to make sure, because there are some things that by statute, we can't just increase impact fees with just willy-nilly. There's actually some formulas in place. So we want to make sure, um, as we look into those that we're following the, the correct guidelines.
So your suggestion, Chris, is to try to consolidate this as much as possible with other analyses?
I don't know that he's saying consolidate. I think what he's saying is make sure that we also do that.
Okay.
So.
Yes, correct.
Can I chime in on that just a little bit? Because we do these quite often as well. So impact fees fall under the impact fee law, which Utah has in place. It's, it's actually a law that has to be followed when putting these together. And you can generate impact fees for, um, emergency services or stormwater, for parks and rec, for water, for sewer. You can, you can generate, and the impact fees are actually fees that are charged to a developer when they come in and develop. The concept is that the developer is paying for his impacts on the community, not the current residents. And so there is an impact fee law in place that dictates how you do that. Um, that has to be followed. And I think Chris has got a great idea because, um, as this development happens, we could be collecting some impact fee money from these developers for the added, um, for example, you know, emergency services coverage we have. Or, you know, the added impact because of stormwater from development or the added to the water system. And we have a water system impact fee, but, um, I think it's a great idea. Um, I did reach out to, to, uh, we, we get involved in these quite a bit doing analysis. We just finished a few for some other communities. But there's also some financial groups out there that do these and know the code. Um, Zion's Bakes, one of them, Lewis Young Robertson in Birmingham. Um, a couple of others that we work with too. So I think it'd be, I, I think it'd be a great recommendation that Chris has made to even look to see what it would take to, to have these completed. By way of money, I guess, is where I'm going.
Okay.
Yes.
And any other comment, Corbett?
Just for clarity, when, when Ted talks about developers paying these impact fees, sometimes it's developers, sometimes it's the builder that, that pulls the building permit when those fees are paid. So it depends on how that fee is, is created, when it's paid and who pays it. So it's not just the developer that pays it unless we're considering the homeowner or the builder as the developer also.
Okay, thank you. All right, Jody, any, anybody else up there?
Is it regarding this issue? Is it regarding this issue or is it public comment?
Yeah, no, I, I wasn't intending to open the general public comment just to this issue. So we, we do open that up generally? Don't, don't we? Okay.
It's, it's at your discretion.
Okay.
And.
Thank you.
And honestly, I think, you know, generally we're a little looser than most cities. So we usually allow comment.
Okay.
But it totally is at your discretion.
Okay. Well, it doesn't appear that there is any, so.
We have one chat.
Oh, where is it? Oh, Chad Lyman. Okay. Uh, Chad?
Yeah, thanks for the opportunity. It's not necessarily in line with the engineering, uh, aspect of it. But I know other cities do go through a, a kind of a visioning process where they take input from their citizens and surveys and other things to determine, you know, what they want to do with open space and how things want to be laid out. And, uh, you know, since we're taking, uh, into consideration, you know, what developers can and can't do and, and those things. I thought maybe that, uh, request would be in line with, uh, this conversation. So that's all I had. Thanks.
Yeah.
Thanks, Chad.
And, and Chad, I would just, um, we actually do that as well. It's called our general plan. And it has to be updated every five years, which means it's probably due.
This year.
So, um, we'll be doing that as well. But if you want to review the previous general plan, it's available on the city website.
All right. Thank you.
Okay, without further discussion, we'll move on. Uh, Chris, back to you for November financials and check approval.
Sorry, that's usually under consent agenda. I didn't notice it was pulled off, so. Everything's going good. I gave you the little report, um, a couple of weeks ago at our council meeting that we had for the budget retreat. Nothing further to add.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Uh, well, we do have a legislative update. Uh, do we have that?
I've been texting them back and forth. Uh, um, Senator McKell has been in some committee meetings tonight and may attempt to, um, join us, um, via Zoom if he can.
Okay.
Um, Representative Burton is on his way here.
Okay.
So we might just hear from one. We might hear from both, but they should be able to answer our questions.
Okay, perfect. Um, well, so with respect to eight and nine, why don't we just come back to both of those since they're tied together and move on to, uh, item ten, uh, city council reports. Council member Hilliard.
Um, so we met as the Parks and Trails, um, and Recreation Committee. Um, we've requested from them to get us a new chair member or head. Um, and then also maybe even a vice. So they are going through those discussions to figure out amongst themselves who they want to nominate for your, um, appointment to those positions.
Great.
Um, so they're working on that. And then Public Works and Roads, I have not, um, been to any of that. So we'll just wait and David will cover all of that.
No, I won't. We haven't met. That's.
Then I'm glad I haven't missed anything.
All right. Thank you, Ben. Um, any other, uh, actually, uh, Doral, uh, public safety.
I'll just mention volunteers are premium. Cities all around us are, are having challenges meeting the needs of fire and medical services with their community. And so just keep that in the back of your mind that right now, our city is very fortunate to have volunteers almost enough to, to keep us running. And, and in fact, I think we're fortunate, and I, and I can't say why. It's just a good thing that we have, well, the people we do in our community who volunteer to help us out. I'm still haunted by the visit we made to other fire departments when we were looking at trucks, how they were saying, you know, we have to pay fifty dollars an hour for each of our people. For, that's a lot of money. We, we wouldn't have a problem paying that money. So, and, and frankly, volunteers are better at managing the workload. So keep that in mind that someday we might not be in the same situation we are now, but we're very fortunate to have people we have.
Amen. Um, I, I have been curious, uh, you know, as far as turnover with, uh, our, our firefighters. Uh, is, is that something that we're staying sort of on top of or is, are we?
You know, I have learned in twenty-plus years that if you aren't getting new people, you're falling behind. And, and we are, we're a little behind right now. We've just lost four. Um, but we, we just obtained another volunteer that stepped up and looking forward to him serving long and diligently with us. Um, but you don't know in the first month of a new volunteer or the first six months of a new volunteer, what they will add to our group.
Yeah.
But I like what our chief says. He says there's a fit for the people that we're looking for. And some people don't fit, but I'm very excited to say that the last couple are really good fits to us. So we do need to continue to, to acquire people that are interested in this.
Recruit?
Doral, how do we, how do we get our volunteers? Is it just word of mouth at this point? Because I think there are people in town that might be interested but don't, but are just saying, well, I don't know anything about it. They don't realize that training is involved and that they can just come in and start if they have a, an interest in it and that you and, and chief and others would, would take them through the process of becoming a volunteer. We have a lot of new families that have moved in that I think they would probably be interested. Would you like to put something in the newsletter?
Opinion that I'm, yeah, I'm of the opinion that we need to always be looking and always have an open door.
Okay.
I love what we're doing now and that is we're bringing new, interested people in and telling them what's required. I mean, it's not a simple.
And then they choose, yeah.
It's not a simple thing that everybody can do, you know, with their occupation and so on.
Right.
Some are more, anyway, it, it's a demanding volunteer position. So, yeah, I think we should put it out there, but.
Okay.
But just because they come in doesn't mean they're going to.
Be accepted.
Like it or be accepted.
Yeah, yeah.
Either way, it's a two-way.
Yeah, just put your, put your name out there, see if the, what the time commitment is involved. Make sure that you really are interested in that, that level of commitment and that level of dedication and hard work.
Everybody finds out they will love us.
Of course they will.
I also think.
We have to love them too.
I also think having the message out there that we are a volunteer fire department. We are a volun- mostly volunteer EMS. We are, you know, mostly volunteer snowplow drivers. I think have, you know, just keeping that message out there is a really good message. And it, it helps people, you know, maybe be a little kinder to the snowplow driver when he puts snow in their driveway.
Is there a way we could put, um, you know, Carrie, you and Chloe do such a fabulous job. Is there a way we could put names to the volunteers? You know, do a spotlight on occasion of, you know, go through them and just, because I know like on my street, how many volunteers do we have just on Highline here? I know there's a few, but I, I know that there's a few. I don't really know exactly who they are. And I think we could benefit as a community knowing who the people are that are, are doing so much for us.
I wonder if our chief would want a roster published. I'm not sure. That's, that's a good question. Um, I have found, you know, I'm, I'm, I'm grabbing these guys and gals and taking them aside and saying, why are you doing this? And I'm getting some incredible answers. And, and you're going to hear from one of them with the appreciation that brings tears to them. So they all do it for different reasons, but there are some really good reasons that people do it.
Great.
So one thing to add, uh, most of our volunteers are in the department is they're not looking for the recognition.
No.
Matter of fact, they just want to go do their job, go home. So.
That's key.
That's, that's kind of an attribute that, that they all have. So we do give recognition, but they don't, they're not seeking it.
Well, and I wonder if that's maybe because their chiefs that way. Um, but I just think.
A good reason to do that way.
Oh, we know that. Um, but I'm wondering if that could be a benefit to the community though. You know, from a, an ability to unite us as a whole and to better understand the contribution the city and all of its volunteers bring to the residents of Woodland Hills. You know, it's important to know who, who's serving us. And it's easier for me to say thank you as I see them in the hall or, or any of those types of things if I know who they are. You know, I had a wonderful conversation the, just today with one of our volunteers. And it was, it was grateful that I know that they are a volunteer and I was able to thank them. And I think we could do better at that.
I would like to know who our snowplow drivers are because I don't know. Thank you, Nettie.
Okay, thanks, Doral.
What's that? Oh, no.
Okay, start again.
Thank you, Jody.
All right, thanks, Doral. Okay, um, and I don't, is, is Janet on? I, I don't know.
No, she's on a plane, maybe.
She's in the.
Not me.
Of, of her travel itinerary or?
We've all been getting that one.
He says, report for community events and volunteers.
Is your mic on?
I got you, Doral.
Thanks, man.
Okay, so report for community events and volunteers. It's time to start looking for someone to cheer Woodland Hills, Dave. She would like some suggestions if anyone has any names. Also for a report for parks and trails, the committee would like volunteers to maintain the water bars and clear down trees on a regular basis. Also for a report for parks and trails, the committee would like volunteers to maintain the water bars and clear down trees on a regular basis.
On the switchbacks, right?
On the switchbacks. Those are two things.
All right. Thanks, Jody, and thanks, Janet. Okay, Carrie, communication?
Yes, we are going forward with our weekly newsletter. It's going well. We're getting a lot of feedback. Our big thing right now is naming of the snowplows. We've had a lot of people put that in. They have loved especially Corbett's suggestions. But we have had, we've had a lot, so we're narrowing it down to the, how many did we have to start with? Quite a, I mean, 20, 30, 40 names. And so we've narrowed it down to the top five. We're putting those in this week and, and letting them narrow it down to the top four. And then we can get some details made to put on the, on the trucks. And yeah, yeah, we'll all do that.
This is harder than drain water.
We'll just, we'll just call it into Zach and it will get made and, and then we'll figure it out. But, but anyways, it's going well. Again, with all of you, if there's anything that you ever want to put in the newsletter, just let me know prior to Tuesdays. Chloe and I meet for a few hours on every Tuesday and go over every, every detail that we can think of and, Jody and Corbett and Craig are really good for us highlighting ordinances, but if there's something that you see you would like highlighted, let me know. So I think it's going well. I would like to give an update too on some of the legislative action that impacts us. Right now we're tracking 50 bills as of today that impact municipalities. The thought is budgets are due on Thursday, so after that, a lot of the bills will be numbered. We think that within the first, next week, there will be about 300 bills that will impact cities and probably towards the end of the session, it'll be over 500. And so we are tracking, some of them will be positive to us, some of them not so positive. So we're trying to make our, our wishes known as, as a part of the league membership. There are three that I wanted to highlight for you right now that are important. One is Senate Bill 110, which is basically having all the municipalities put water as part of our general plan and what we're going to do. And I, and so since we are going to be updating our general plan this year, I think it would be easy for us to include this as a new subject line to that. I, I've only read it through once, but it seems to be a very, one that we would welcome. There are two that I have voiced some concerns with, and that is HB 121, which is Water Conservation Modifications and HB 95, which is Landscape Requirement Prohibition. Both of these, in the attempts, because we're in drought heavy circumstances, makes it so that cities can't require anyone to irrigate their lawns. And we don't really have that issue, but we also, I have brought up several times that as a city that has wildland interface ordinances, we kind of encourage at least a minimum amount of irrigation to, as a fire mitigation issue. And we don't want to completely go total dry to where our whole mountain is a pile of weeds and a big bat stick could take off the whole town. And so they weren't really thinking about that at the time, but they are considering those types of exemptions from these two bills. And I will continue to voice that concern that it's not a, what we like to say is that one size is a misfit for all. And we don't want it to, we don't want to be put in a dangerous situation in an attempt to, to, you know, find solutions to the drought over the whole state.
It feels like the state legislature has become a clearinghouse for everybody's pet ideas.
Yep, that happens quite often.
And that, I, I think one message I would like to be consistent with, with at least our representatives is saying, please, when in doubt, cede to local control. And they have not been doing that lately, including our representatives. And I, I'm really bugged by that.
I just want you to be aware of those bills and, and maybe each council meeting, I'll give a little update on the ones that I think are most important to us.
Thanks, Carrie Corbett. Hang on one second. I, I just want to say I, I was able to go to an elected officials luncheon with Carrie and, and I do, I think that Carrie plays a very vital role in keeping us tapped in. I was amazed at how many people she knew and just thank you for staying plugged in.
Thank you.
Corbett?
Carrie, question. On the water conservation, as, as part of Sumoa, Suva Moa, whatever.
Yeah.
South Utah Valley Municipal Water Association, we, we have a water conservation plan that, that as a city we've committed to. Do you know if that's part of that?
Part of the water conservation modifications that they're talking about or on the water as part of our general plan?
Is it just being considered, is the water conservation plan that's, that's been developed by Sumoa and Central Utah, is that being considered in part of, of this House bill?
Probably not, but I can double check because it's based on not water districts, but as a municipality. So water districts, which that is, would have their own conservation plan, which may or may not fall under this, but this is specific for municipalities. So if somebody came to us and said, I'm not ever watering any of my property and going to just let it grow into a big wheat patch that's now a fire hazard, there would be nothing we could do about it.
But the only concern I have is will they conflict with each other?
It may.
Yeah. Something to consider, I guess.
Yeah, they do things that conflict with us all the time and then they say, change. Yes, Craig.
Quick in Chiefs meeting this month, they talked about, there's a House bill, they gave us House Bill 145, but it's not the right, it's not the right number.
It's, it's Senate Bill 116 about firefighters?
No, this, this one's about, they're going to, they want to start taxing homes that are in wildland urban interface. The state. Well, the state pays for the fires to be fought. And that's, that's, that's what they're drumming up. So I'll try to get the right House bill number.
Okay. There is one that does have to do with firefighters though, that has some controversy because some that are more on the side of conspiracy. It is about firefighters getting workers comp for if they go to a fire across state lines. And Senator McKell is running that. And for some reason, there are some people who feel that what we're actually doing is allowing firefighters to check for people who are vaccinated or not vaccinated. And so it is blowing up right now on the Hill. But so if you get that, just know that it really is, the intention of it is just to allow for workers compensation for firefighters who are crossing state lines.
They lost that Draper firefighter a couple of years ago and that started it.
Right, when he was, he was killed from, from that tree that came down. Yep. Yep. So anyways, okay, I will be on the watch out for that other one. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Dave, Public Works and Finance Committee.
So no report for Public Works and Finance Committee has scheduled their meeting for, I believe, the first either Wednesday, I think Wednesday in February. So we don't have a meeting yet.
Okay, thank you. All right. So with respect to personnel, I just wanted to point out that we have begun having staff meetings and, and we're trying to just make sure that we've got good communication between city employees and, and us as elected officials. Then just the other point that we, we touched on a little bit is with respect to some of the legal disputes. You know, it's, it's certainly not appropriate for, in, in a legal dispute to, to be targeting city employees in their homes. So we are going to be having conversations concerning steps that, you know, we can take to, I mean, as elected officials, you know, it's a contact sport. We get into this kind of knowing what we're in for, but I think that it does need to, the line needs to be drawn there. So we're going to be looking at ways that we can address that. And, you know, try to put a lid on that going forward.
Thank you, Mayor.
And Mayor, I did hear back from Senator McKell will not be able to make it after all.
Okay.
He just can't get away from his meetings. And but Representative Burton is on his way up, but he is limited on his time, so, but he is on his way from Salem here.
Okay, perfect. Well, and so, I mean, we can still move on to item 11, or we could jump back to just discussion of the proposed city code title 1017. I don't know how much commentary there might be, but if any of you have any thoughts in, in that regard, I mean, if, if everyone feels like it's going to be a relatively light discussion, we can come back to that hopefully by the time that Jeff gets here. Any thoughts, just preliminarily?
Are you asking about the ADU?
Yeah, the ADU. So I, I, I mean, Doral, I know you had some concerns. Do you want to try starting discussing those right now? Or would you prefer to do everything we can to wait until we get that update from?
I, I sent an email to everyone too late, you know, and they haven't had a chance to see it, but I listed a few of the things I would talk about if the, if the legislator were here and, and trying to explain to us what's going on with it. And I think I've already gone through this with this group. I, I don't know if, if, if you see my email and you think I'm nuts, I want to know, you know? Or if you think there's a genius with you, I want to know that too. I, I just have these concerns and more. So I'm trying to really discover, I have a lot of questions to ask someone that's smarter than me about the, the state bill. You know, and I don't think any of us understand it well enough to, to vote on an ordinance. And I, I believe in our own city that, that's, that's in relation to that.
Maybe what we can do is a break might be in order anyway, so maybe we can take a 10 minute break and that will give us a chance to use the restroom or get a drink, whatever.
I think that's a good idea.
And then we can come back and hopefully have everybody that we need to have a meaningful discussion. All right, so we'll take a break until 8:15 and then resume.
Perfect.
Welcome to Representative Jeff Burton. We're very happy to have you here giving us a taste of some of the legislation I suppose that you're going to be considering over the next little bit. But also particularly with the ADU state statute and, and how we can tie it in with our local ordinance that's under consideration. So Representative Burton, I will just turn the time over to you if you have something to.
Okay, well, hey, great to be with you tonight. I'm a little sleepy, so I'll try to be cogent in my, in my remarks. You may have followed the, kind of the distraction that happened earlier in the session. Reference the Salt Lake County mask mandate. Somebody may want to talk about that. I'm happy to feel any questions on that. It kind of took more time than we wanted to take. In fact, we didn't want to take any time on it. We're focusing on the five policy pillars of the House. I don't know if you've heard of those. I think everybody understands. The major issues are water. I've attended every water school that was available this year to include talks on Utah Lake and Great Salt Lake. And, and so those are, are matters that we have to talk about and worry about because conservation only goes so far. We can't control what falls out of the sky. And we do not want the Great Salt Lake to dry up. We've seen other states that have, California, for instance, has purposefully dried out some lakes to funnel it to LA. And they have an amazingly dangerous health hazard with the, the particulates that are in the air now. That silica, clay based soil that's a lake bed, when it gets airborne, it'll, it'll kill you. So water matters. We're very much focused on that. Affordable housing, we all live in, in nice homes, but our kids need homes too. And that is why ADU came up last session is a way to expand housing for those that can't afford to buy, buy new homes. The other one is education modernization and maintaining the Utah way, essentially what we decided to do. Number one, we actually debated whether we'd take the federal money or not. It's funny, money. We don't, we don't like what the federal government's doing, printing money. You can see at the grocery store, if you've, if you balance your own checkbook, like I do, you, you feel the pain of what's happened in one year with inflation. And, and so we're trying to, we've, we're going to, we talked today at length, we, you may remember that the, the EAC, the, the big guns that decide where the money is spent, set aside $160 million for tax cuts. And we're talking about bringing it up maybe 200 million in tax cuts and, and those are being discussed, a three pronged approach to, to get to everybody, to, to take the, the heat off a little bit with what we see out there. And then finally generational investments. We decided if we're going to take the federal money, the only thing we would do is generational things. We're not going to spend that money for operational costs. We don't need to. Some states actually are doing that. We're flush enough that we don't need to do that. So we're doing long-term things like infrastructure projects, but nothing that's going to make an ongoing requirement, if that makes any sense. So those are the main things we're doing. The one bill that I met with the Eagle Forum on yesterday, they're very concerned about HB 16. I don't know if anybody here is worried about that bill. I can talk about it if, if there are questions.
Why don't you just give us an overview? We just finished talking about it a couple of minutes.
All right. So Representative Donegan put that bill forward. It passed in the House. But, but according to Gail, Riziken, some others, that there's some concerns about the definitions in that bill. So having been the commander of the Army in the Air Guard, I can tell you that the guard portion of that bill was based on the fact that if the governor declares a state of emergency and needs to call out the guard, he needed more money. This, this bill gives him $500,000 to call out the guard and that will take a battalion about two weeks to spend that much money. The guard isn't cheap. And we want an effective executive branch that can respond quickly to disaster, but we don't want them to run amok after 30 days, which is kind of what we saw during COVID a little bit. So there's a new commission setup of senators and legislators that will go in and after 30 days and, and give the governor his menu of options because the legislature controls those powers. And, and we'll menu those out as we, we think the governor needs them. The other part of that, and really the crux of that bill was, you may remember the firefighter who was killed in California or one of these western states. May have been Washington, I'm not sure.
He was Draper in California.
Yeah, something fell out of a tree and crushed him. And our firefighters were not properly covered when they crossed state lines to fight wildfires. We solved this for the guard about four years ago because the guard had the same problem. And, and so what was happening is spouses were saying to firemen and guardsmen, why would you volunteer to go there if you get hurt or, or killed? We're, we're not covered as a family. And so that was the intent of that bill to cover firemen, to give the governor a little more money for the guard. But the way it's worded has some people concerned. It talks about, it talks about special security teams under Homeland Security. And essentially what that's talking about, I feel like I need to be back, looking back here. Essentially what that's talking about is I've covered security for three presidents that have come to Utah. And whenever they come, they bring a secret service team. It's pretty clear. They don't take over just that little sector where the president or vice president are going to be. And we, we coordinate with them. And, and all of that falls under Homeland Security now. And so it, it sounds like the boogeyman, but really what they're talking about is security for the, for the president and the vice president when they come to the state. So I understand the concern with federal overreach and, and so forth, but I think when I was done talking to Gail, she was less concerned about it. Now where we are is Donegan is going back and trying to clean up some of the language in the Senate and, and do an amendment when it goes through the Senate on that bill to calm people and make them not be concerned about the language. But I can tell you, there isn't a guardsman in the state that's going to, you know, declare martial law and beat on our own citizens. We're your neighbors. You know us. And we just don't play the game like that. So and beyond that, it's illegal. You may remember the homeless crisis we had some years ago down in Salt Lake. Do you remember that? I actually had somebody come and ask me to put guard troops on the street and, and round up the homeless people. And I told him, no, because it's against the law. And I can only do that if the governor or the president orders that. And even then, under very limited circumstances, so. So anyway, I don't know what to say. I, I hope if there's some questions that anybody has on that bill, I'm happy to answer them. If not, I'll just move on. Yeah, man.
There's the three, three bills I want, two of them I've already talked to you about, the water conservation laws, just to make sure that those with wildland interface ordinances are maybe exempt from some of that language that's in there because you do want to make sure we are not increasing our fire hazard.
Right.
And so I know that you are on top of that. The other one that I mentioned to you was something our chief brought up that they talked about in the fire chief meeting this morning. Chief, do you want to tell him what that one was and so that he can keep an eye on it?
I just brought up that they were going to start taxing homes that were within the wildland urban interface. When the states fight in the fires, that's where they're at.
And then was that mentioned by a later?
Well, they, they, they wrote it down as House Bill 145, but that's not correct. I looked it up and that was, had something to do with voting.
Okay, so I'll take note of that. I have not heard anybody say that. It doesn't seem fair to me to do that. So I've not heard anybody talk about that. I haven't heard it in any bills, but that would be an issue, so.
I'll get a hold of my contact and see if I can get the House bill.
He looked it up and it was the wrong bill.
It was the wrong bill.
So, so yeah, but it has to do with the wildland interface ordinances, with urban ordinances and the state taxing those homes that are...
Taxing homeowners while in fire interface. Okay. Yeah, I'll look into that one tomorrow. I did look into the one that you mentioned about the, the, look, one size fits all, never fits everybody. And so while we're trying to conserve and while it might make sense for Salem City to tell me to do some xeriscaping with my yard in the future, up here, it doesn't make a lot of sense, and I have a, a big green lawn around your residence. And, and I get that. And so I talked to the sponsor of that bill and, and I'll watch it because I, I agree with you. The fires that we had in 2010 outside of Camp Williams were primarily because of scrub oak. It's pitchy and it explodes. Anybody who's been around fires, and I've been around lots of them, knows. And so some would tell you to cut the scrub oak down, but you live up here because you like the scrub oak. So we have enough water that people can water lawns. What we, what we want to avoid in the future is businesses being told they've got to, by some cities, and they're doing this, they've got to have, you know, X number of square feet of lawn around a business that's never used. Doesn't make a lot of sense. And so conservation, we're going to continue. And if you listen to what happened last summer, Utah did such a good job of conserving. It was amazing how much water we saved because everybody kind of turned down the faucet. But, but conservation alone is not going to save us. We, we need more moisture, so, and that's one thing we don't control. So, but I'll watch that because I understand Woodland Hills and Elk Ridge would like to water their lawns. And I, I, I see why, so.
This is a fire mitigation component.
Okay.
So Doral, Doral, Councilman Kettiston has some specific questions with regards to ADUs.
Okay, yes, sir.
Let me, let me give you a little bit of background. HB 82, its intent is to provide more homes, places for people to live. Sounds like a good idea. We need to do that. But if you look, look hard and long at our community, every one of our homeowners pays property tax. And those property taxes support most of every service our city offers. Police coverage, fire coverage, GMS, roads, water systems, you name it. Everything is supported by property taxes paid by homeowners. I worry about allowing or sort of encouraging even people to rent to people that don't contribute to that. So that's, that's, that's one...
So could I ask you a question, Councilman? Are you talking about HB 82 from last year's session?
Yes, yes.
Okay, let me, let me pull that up.
The one that went into law May, May 5th, 2021. So, so I'm just trying to find a fit for that law governing all of what, Utah, to our city and figuring out how we can stay in compliance with that law. There's, there's other issues, unless you want me to wait.
No, I found, I found it. I pulled, I just pulled it up on my phone here and I'm, I'm looking it over. So specifically, your point is that renters don't help with the taxes.
Not in our city. They, they do where there's a lot of business and people, they're paying in taxes for their food and for their purchases. They, you know, and, and I frankly don't want to add new fees to a, a homeowner that decides to rent to recoup those costs for these services that our city provides. The other issue we have in our city is most of our homes are on sewer, are septic.
Right.
And septic's don't, in fact, I would predict that all of them will fail eventually, given enough time and use. That's been my experience in life with, having grown up with septic tanks. They are, they, you know, more people in a house is going to, is going to cause issues with that. And, and that's, that's, and someone like Salem or Spanish Fork, they don't have that issue. You know, they've got good, good sewer systems. Thirdly, we're not conveniently located. You know, we, you, you want affordable housing, but I don't think renters are going to find affordable housing renting in our city. I, I don't know that, but I, I have a sense that, that they might not because there's no public transportation up here to get anywhere. It's inconvenient to go shopping, really. I mean, it's, we're, we're kind of out in the woods. Then a, then a fourth question that I don't understand is there was talk in the bill about homeowner associations being exempt. And yet, again, later I read homeowner associations can charge a new fee for renters to use the homeowner association facilities. So I was a little confused. And if you knew that, that answer, there's a section of our city that has a very good, well-functioning homeowner association. And, and what are they to do with, with the renters' compliance with this law?
Okay, are those, are those your questions?
Yeah, there's a few more, but let's quit and start there.
You can keep going because I don't know the answer to, to all of them, but I'm, I'm going to get it for you. I, I remember this bill from last year. It was controversial, and what came out is one size does not fit all. For instance, Provo was very opposed to this.
They have renters, I don't know why they would be.
Because, well, they've got, they've got challenges. For instance, my son lives in Provo and, and one of his neighborhoods, these are big, nice homes, maybe, maybe 15 years ago. But what's happened is now there are like eight students in one home and, and 12 cars in front of that house. They can't get them off the street for, for plowing.
Yeah.
There are a lot of challenges with it. And so some communities embrace this fully. I can understand exactly where you're coming from. Bedroom communities, I call them.
Yeah, exactly.
My question, my question is a little broader, and I apologize for being this blunt, but why does the state feel the need to dictate some of these things? It, it feels very oppressive and a bit like, you know, you, you made the, the comment of one size does not fit all. And honestly, that comes across sounding a little trite, given the way the, the legislature's been acting in the last probably two, three years. Because they seem to be all about making one size fits all and really getting into the business. And I realize that we are an entity of the state, I get that. But it feels like this, the legislature has been really getting into the business of local municipalities, and I'm not sure why.
You know, I'm not sure that I have an answer for you, David. I can tell you that the legislature, and I'm new, I mean, this is my, my second session, so I don't have a ton of institutional knowledge. I, I was on the Hill a lot in the uniform, but I'd never served in a political position before. So what I've noticed, just from my time up there, is I think there's some frustration on the part of the legislature. The Salt Lake County Council is a case in point. It was felt like the, the mask mandate was egregious and, and it didn't make a lot of sense. And so some said, oh, you're doing the same thing the federal government did by overturning that mandate. You're heavy-handing a state. Well, you pointed out in your comment a moment ago, there is a difference. Political subdivision of the state is different than the federal government, which is its own supreme entity, and the state, which is also a supreme entity unto itself. So yes, the legislature can, so it's kind of the could we, should we rule, I guess. We could, we can do some of the things that we've done. Should we have? Maybe not. I would probably agree with most of what you just said. The challenge is many in the legislature, and frankly, I think the leadership felt that the crisis with housing is such that they had to do something because they, they've talked to the League of Cities and Towns quite a lot, and they, they just couldn't come to an agreement on what could be done to make this thing work. In my opinion, what should have been done is each city should have been able to choose for themselves what they did. But ultimately, what happened is most cities would not have done ADUs. And I guess the point was the people that need these, we're not talking about low-income people needing an ADU. We're talking about your kids and, and my kids that need a place to live and that can't afford to do it. So I think many in the House felt like, hey, kids are going to start moving away from Utah if they can't afford to live here. This was an idea to, to just immediately make more housing available to people because, and, and to, to benefit some people because they could rent. Some people may want to rent, and they couldn't because their city wouldn't let them do it. So do I agree that this bill should have been done this way? And are you talking specifically about 82, or are you talking about other things?
Yeah, honestly, I mean, I'd throw...
Like what else?
I'd throw the mask mandate in there. I would throw some of the, some of the...
Building regulations?
The building regulations.
Like, like what, what building regulations?
Thing, it's like, really? You're going to tell the cities that, that they're not smart enough to control whether or not an outside lawn gets watered? I mean, it's like, they're...
No, I think the cities are doing that on their own. I think they're controlling that on their own.
I, I get that, but why then this bill?
Which bill?
The, the one that we were just talking about.
The one that Mike, the one that Mike McKel is sponsoring?
No, that's the one, that's 110, that's just putting it into your general plan, which is something that we approve of. It's the ones from Ward and Spindlove, 121 and 95.
Oh, Robert Spindlove. Okay, I haven't read that bill yet, it hasn't come up. But I know that the state got involved with water because I think we'll all agree that we've got a problem with the second drive state in the nation, and we've had the longest drought on record. So yeah, is that a concern for the state? Yeah, I'd argue that it is.
And I don't disagree that it's a concern for the state. It's just, it seems a little arrogant that they don't think it's also already a concern for the cities.
No, they do. And I think why the state got involved with water, for instance, is some cities have, have already gone ahead and stuck their neck out, spent the money, and put in metering for secondary systems. Other states or other cities haven't done that or have no intention of doing it. And so I think part of the reason the state started getting involved in water was to say, hey, we've got extra money, let's provide metering equipment for cities that have not taken the, that upon themselves to do it yet. And so then what we get is, you know, back chatter from cities are saying, wait a minute, we did it, and you're going to reward the cities that didn't do it. So what are you going to do for us? Well, so now we're talking about helping them upgrade what they already put in, so.
Well, and, okay, so let's go to the federalist, I mean, why not a block grant and just let the cities figure out what to do with that money? I mean, there's, I, I guess what I'm saying is it, it has just felt very much... The ADU was one that kind of honestly shocked me a bit. Out of all of the things that this, the state legislature could have done to increase housing, that was like probably number 12 on the list of what they...
On whose list? On your list, or?
I mean, seriously, that, that didn't feel like, that, that didn't feel like a top priority to me. And yet, I, I look across the valley and there's, to me, the bigger issue is the fact that we have a lack of home, home builders. And we've got massive building taking place. I mean, again, I've, I've got friends that are in the construction industry, and they're booked out so far that they don't know when they're going to...
Yeah, that, that's called demand. And, and the fact is, they can't get people to work for them. We won't take those jobs. So what's happening is they're scalping employees from job sites. So we, we can't build our way out of this right now. That's, that's the challenge. The, the labor force simply isn't here to do that. We, we're, I mean, they're trying, they're doing everything they can to get people to come and expand their business so they can build more. I think people thought, and again, I didn't sponsor this bill. I think I ultimately did vote for it, but, but it was viewed as low-hanging fruit. It was that, hey, the housing's already there. If people want to rent it, we need to let them do that by, by passing this ordinance. And I think it came, and again, it, I don't know this for sure, David, but I think it came because some of the legislature felt that, or the sponsors of the bill felt that cities were stonewalling. And some of them were. I'm not saying you're one of them. And, and really, to your point, Doral, I don't think you're going to get a lot of people renting ADUs in Woodland Hills. But, but some, some cities were, were kind of pushing back on it. And the fact is, there's a lot of housing to be had in, in people's basements. And many people, as they get older, want somebody in their house with them.
And I, I think that it's important, I mean, I appreciate the debate, but I, I think that we probably have a more specific purpose in terms of trying to inform our decision regarding our own ADU ordinance. So I, I would like to...
No, but I appreciate the conversation because I get the frustration. I really do, I really do. And, and I'd love to talk about the mask mandate at some point, too, but I don't want to get too far off where you're trying to go, so.
Well, and, and I appreciate your willingness to come and to talk about these issues. But I, I, I do think that it's important if we try to stay focused on at least, you know, the, the purpose, or at least one key purpose, in my opinion, of, of having you come and address this tonight.
So I've read your ordinance. I just printed it off on my, on my computer. So I've read it, and that's the extent of what I know about your ordinance. But I did read it, it looks a lot like the, the state one. Some of the stuff was taken out of the state one.
Just put it in the...
Kind of modeled it after Salem.
Yeah.
And so I think one of the points is that, is that we're talking about internal ADUs that are owner occupied. And so it's about renting the room. It's about renting a mother-in-law's apartment to non-family members. Now, I think stats, Representative, you might know it better, but I think the stats statewide is although this is a requirement, less than 5% are actually being used for housing. But it, you know, it does, it is another option, not only for someone looking for housing, but again, we have some, I know of a couple of widows in town that now have this huge, big house. They, they can, they can, could rent their basement to someone that they feel comfortable with, having some extra help around the house, plus getting some additional income. And, and they feel comfortable with that. And so I think this is just providing options. It's not forcing anyone to have an ADU in their property. It's not forcing a certain amount of people to have an ADU. It's just allowing residents that opportunity to rent if they choose. And then for us to be able to say, yes, we understand that there's a housing crisis. We may or may not contribute to solving that issue, but we've, we've done our due diligence according to what the state has asked us to do.
But, but...
Yeah, I mean, I didn't see anything here that forces anybody to do anything, but it, it does kind of model the state, the state plan. And I think what most people worry about is parking.
Yeah, that's the number one issue.
It seems to be the number one issue. And, and I, and I think it's wonderful, and this is America after all. If, if a widow wants to rent her basement to a, a family and she trusts them, then she ought to be able to do that as long as she's not impinging on the rights of neighbors and so forth with a, with a motley crew moving into the, the place, some gangbanger or something. But, but that's another issue, then, then law enforcement might get involved or whatever, but...
We have a good deputy back here.
I, I know I saw him, yeah.
He'll, he'll stop that.
I feel so much safer.
He, he keeps the order in our meetings.
That's good.
But, and, and again, I think in addressing your issue with septic, you know, in a home, and make, Wayne, maybe you know this, but, you know, septic is put in based on the number of bedrooms that you have. So if you are renting and you're going through the proper rental... rental procedure that we would put in place here, the increase to the septic would be similar if it was a normal family living there all the time, based on the number of bedrooms.
Everybody's sold on your ideas, except me. I just don't know, I don't know how to manage it. My first criteria is finding out if there's a rental. And I don't want to know whether so-and-so is living in this home and paying the owner rent. I think that's, as you put it in this document, it says, let me find this. There's a very important sentence in this bill. I will find it. I will find it.
Are you talking about line 282?
Yes. Thank you, Carrie. The building official shall not request proprietary information.
That's the state statute.
That's right out of their state statute. And I believe anything potentially that our building inspector would need to do to go and clear a, you know, approve a site, he's going to be requesting proprietary information. Are you being paid rent? To me, that alone is not something I want our city collecting information on. I love it that we have renters in the city today. Because they have the hardships. They have the need to make their house payment. I have no problem with that, and I would do nothing to stop that. But I don't want to put a big expense and policing effort into managing this new ordinance that these people want to pass.
And now you're talking about the city ordinance?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. I was hoping, as you mentioned, we could just follow the state and let the state one be there and run as we are. Because we have renters now.
So you like the state making ordinance for the city?
No, no, no. But I don't want us, I don't want us to make one that's the same stuff. You know, that's crazy, in my opinion, to have an ordinance under an ordinance that says the same thing.
And I just thought that you did this because you wanted to fashion it so that it kind of complied with Woodland Hills. Because you are different, let's face it. This is a different city than Salem or Spanish Fork.
Representative, I think right now, our code says no. So renters, ADUs are illegal.
So right now, your code says that.
I just couldn't find that.
This is the fix. Our code to be in compliance with state law.
I understand. Well, and I think that we've had folks renting to their families or having family members living with them for a long time. But this is specifically for folks that aren't family.
True.
And look, I understand all the issues that come in here when you start bringing in renters. Folks don't have to get your approval on the kind or quality of people they're going to rent to.
Nor do the neighbors get to give approval that they're going to have renters living with them, around them.
But that happens in a neighborhood now. I had a neighbor that decided to build another house, kept his house, and started renting it. And I did not like the renters. They were a problem. And law enforcement had to get involved on more than one occasion with spousal issues. So I understand that. And as we grow, these growing pains are going to affect all of us. I mean, this valley is exploding. And I don't think any of us can expect to not be affected. But we need to try to keep things the way that we want them to be. So I get it. I didn't see anything in here that was extremely troubling to me. So what's troubling to you? And I don't think I answered any of your questions.
Well, that's a-
You talked about bedroom-
That's a challenge to me because I don't know what to tell our HOAs. I don't know how we handle that.
So, I mean, I grew up in a home with a septic system. And the bottom line is, you simply have to get it worked on a little bit more often if you add people to the home. That's just, that's a no-brainer. You have to have it pumped more often. You might have to use the stuff you put down the system to keep the decay going, or whatever they call it. I can't remember what it is. Yeast, essentially. And I think everybody understands that. So, but I don't think we can solve the problem. They are not going to pay sales tax up here to benefit the city of Woodland Hills because there's nothing here commercially. Is there any retail outlets at all? I didn't think so.
No, we don't have any of that.
But I think, to your point, and maybe this is where we can turn the conversation a little bit. This has been passed.
Yeah.
The state has passed it. So for us to sit here and argue whether or not it should have been passed is kind of pointless. We could certainly propose changes, and maybe you'd be willing to take those up, maybe not. But it's passed. So now the question is-
Except, there is a phrase in the document that says, this is a two-year trial for the lending of someone getting cheap loan money to build an ADU in their house, which implies to me maybe the whole baloney is a two-year trial.
Well, look, anything is overturnable. In fact, I'm doing one this year, overturning a bill that was done in 2008 that made a lot of sense then, makes no sense now. So I think the two-year aspect was simply a pilot to see how many citizens would take advantage of refurbishing their basement, for example, and cutting a new door in so that they could have an ADU. It was kind of to try to encourage people to do it.
And to encourage safety, right? Because they might need to modify a living area for safety concerns.
Well, what they didn't want is for people to say, yeah, we're going to rent our basement, but everybody's going through the same door.
Right.
That's not, yeah, that's not acceptable. And so that was two-year money just to see, and they'll probably renew it if people use it. But yeah, if you guys have something constructive that you'd like me to take forward to change this next year, I'd be happy to look at it. The fact is, you know, I like blunt force trauma. What I mean by that is I like to argue the points, and I like to hear people's opinions. Because what I hear more from citizens than ever is that they feel like nobody's listening to them. And I've got thick skin. I'm not afraid of hearing your viewpoints. David, you made some good ones. I've asked myself some of the same questions up there. But we have some complex problems to solve as the state continues to grow. And I was at a conference in Salt Lake last year, and they talked about the number of buildable acres in Salt Lake County and the number of buildable acres in Utah County. Guess what? It's all coming our way. You may have heard about the Salem fight down there with D.R. Horton.
Yeah.
And-
The mail.
And the church selling that land to them, and just the outcry and the uproar. They project more homes in that one project than already exist in Salem currently. And people are just sick about the fact that this valley's changing. And the fact of it is, it's going to change. We just have to manage it the best way that we can. So I want to be your representative. I want to support you. If you're upset about something, I want to hear about it. If I can, if I can help you, I will. If I can't, and we're in disagreement, I'll tell you. And then you can elect somebody else. I never wanted to be a politician, folks. The only reason I did it is because I felt like it was my duty to serve. And I'm not going to make a career out of this, but I'm going to do my best while I'm up there. So that's why I'm here tonight. Yeah.
Can you take just a few minutes and tell us what proposed legislation you're putting out?
Yeah, I don't have a lot this year. My big ask, and I've got it tomorrow morning with a really mean, nasty committee that doesn't like to give away money. I passed a bill last year called House Bill 327, which was to have a civics education institute at Utah Valley University to teach honest civics. I don't mind if an 18-year-old votes for Bernie Sanders as long as they understand the government that gave them the blessings that they have. And sadly, when we started focusing on STEM 20 years ago, the bill payer was social studies. And we can see it in the testing and how many people can and can't pass the citizenship test. It's startling. And so I got the bill passed, and we got $1 million one time to open the center at UVU. It's underneath the Center for Constitutional Studies. And the reason I did it there is because they're very, they have a good track record of being very honest and apolitical. I don't want it to be political. I just want it to be honest. Kids should know what the Mayflower Compact is, and the Declaration of Independence, and the Constitution, the Federalist Papers. And here's what's happening. We're cranking out college graduates, and they didn't get civics. They didn't get civics in high school and junior high. They got a current events class about all the gripes and complaints about the decay of our society, but they didn't learn about the founding documents and the intent of the founders. And so then their teacher, their principal tells them, hey, you're teaching civics this year. And they go, oh, they turn it into a current events class. They get online. They find lesson plans, beautiful lesson plans developed by the 1619 Project, which is just a portion of Critical Race Theory. It's the same thing. And that's what they teach our kids in classes. And so this center at UVU, what they've already done, they met with 150 teachers this year. They get CEUs for attending. They were trained in the founding documents, and they would actually help them build curriculum so that they can go out and share that with other teachers and use it across the state. And so tomorrow, I'm asking for $3 million ongoing to get this thing permanent and entrenched at the university. And then ultimately, I want one in every public university. Because here's the problem. Our universities, if you didn't know it, they're very left-leaning. And you can like that, or you can hate it, but it's the truth. And they'll start a social justice program without anybody telling them to. But they won't start an honest civics program without the legislature making them do it. And that's a fact. And so that's my big ask. And then I've got some other bills. One of them is this. You may hate this one.
Before you go on, I just want to ask. So basically, what you're saying is, this civics class isn't necessarily just for university students, but it is for teachers getting their ongoing continuing ed-
Yes.
Who are public school teachers, then getting that community, I mean, that continuing ed credit, and then going back into the public schools?
Right. Because the way it works, just so you know, the State Board of Education provides guidelines, policy guidelines for districts. And then districts develop the curriculum on their own. They power down, which we all like. The problem is, there's little control of what goes on in the classroom. So what many teachers will do is just, they'll bring up a charged racial issue and get discussion going. And then they say, well, we have to answer the questions. And then they get into the Critical Race Theory stuff. So the bottom line is, I think our kids are smart. We ought to let them discuss important ideas. But it's like playing football or basketball. Teach the fundamentals first, which is, you know, this republic gave you these blessings. Understand it. Love it or hate it, you need to understand it. And then you can discuss some of these other ideas at the college level. So, yes. Ultimately, what they'll do at UVU is have a civics degree that leads to government service or some other type of thing, like political science. But for me, the big deal was to get, to target the teachers of our children, get grades seven through 12, and give them tools so they don't have to go online and get the easy stuff that we don't want them to teach. At least, most of us don't want them to teach that stuff.
And what's the angry one?
What's that?
What's the next one that you said is kind of going to irritate people?
Oh, no. So I've got a bill, real quick. I've got three bills in addition to that fight for the civics education continuation. One of them is House Bill 169. What it does, it's very simple. When a chief executive like you, if you declared an emergency in Woodland Hills City, you've got some sort of emergency, there's a fire or whatever, that public workers become emergency workers. Case in point, I'll just explain. When I was running the guard, you know, I had almost 3,000 full-time employees of many different. Some were active-duty military, some were state employees, some were contractors, and some actually said, when we had emergencies and I needed them to do a function, perform a function, they said, well, that's not my job description. I'm not doing it. And so the point of the bill is, if the governor declares an emergency and we need all hands on deck, everybody who's a state or a county or a municipal employee would essentially become an emergency worker. Which would mean that the mayor and the council could say, hey, Bob, I know you are this, you know, you do building inspections, but today I need you to be up here to help this crew that's going up to, to give the logistics to that crew that's going up to fight the fire. I've talked to the Public Employees' Union. They don't oppose it. So I think it'll go through. But you may love that, you may hate it. But I think if you're going to take the king's gold, you need to ride for the brand. And when there's an emergency, we need everybody.
When are we getting the gold?
To help out, yeah. It's all, it's funny gold. It's real. Trust me.
Are you printing money, too?
They'll tell you. They'll tell you it's real. No, I wish I could. Wouldn't we all be doing it if we could?
Yeah.
I'm just, I'm just kind of, of course, we had our experience with the fire and the evacuation and everything. And, you know, if it hasn't been said enough, every single one of our employees not only became emergency employees, but, I mean, we're working-
24 hours.
Astronomical hours.
They wanted to.
So it's shocking that you would even have to put that kind of bill in there.
Well, it seems to be in the urban areas, we have a lot of employees that don't feel the way that, about their city that your folks did. And I was here. I know your guys worked their tail off, guys and gals. But, and then I ran the health department for the first four months of COVID, and I had a lot of that from people that said, well, that's not my job description. Time out, I need you to go help run a vaccination clinic. You know, you can stand there and hand out alcohol swabs. We need you there. And people push back. So there is a need, and that's why we're doing it. And then the other ones are small. They're not big. But again, it's just correcting things that need to be fixed. We passed something, and one of them is this. We built a system called Iris back in 2008. Iris is to protect your personal identity. Well, I don't think government should be in the business of protecting your personal identity. And when you look at what's out there now, most of you wouldn't think of, in fact, Iris hasn't been used in 10 years or hasn't been on a single request, yet we continue to maintain it. And, you know, people use LifeLock. They use private systems that work a whole lot better at protecting their identity. And so the point is, we can save $100,000 right now by just ending that program that isn't used. The AG's office will continue to prosecute identity theft cases, but they shouldn't be monitoring and upgrading a system that isn't used. People go, it's the marketplace. You go to the best service you can find. And that's what folks have done. So, anyway. Now, back to you. Sorry, I know you're-
Really? No, no, no. This was very helpful, and I actually like the idea. Sorry, go ahead, Doral.
Thank you very much for being here. This is-
Yeah. No, and honestly, I wish I could give you satisfaction. There's a lot of things that maybe I don't know the answer to yet. It's very interesting to watch the dance up there. And I do think people mean well, by and large, but I understand the frustration. I was very torn on the mask mandate thing. But ultimately, I'll just say this about the mask mandate. Why would you, around this table, set an ordinance that you know can't be enforced, and that further you don't allow your law enforcement team to enforce the ordinance?
It's funny you should ask.
Yeah.
I mean, is it logical? Is it logical, or is it political? You know, the data that we have, and these scientists, and I love them, Dr. Dunn is a friend of mine. She worked for me for four months. And she's a good person. She means well. But this became more political than scientific. The data shows that Omicron is not even impinged a little bit by mask wear. It spreads rapidly. It's not like the initial COVID virus. Very different. And the other thing that I think was disingenuous by the Salt Lake County Council was that they know we have a supply chain issue. We call it the Biden supply chain issue. But it was before Biden. The Chinese pumped out tens of thousands of KN95 masks, all of which were not KN95 masks. 60% of the KN95 masks are counterfeits. They are about as good as a hospital mask. And so, and they knew that. And the whole crux of their mandate was, we need to have the mandate so we can push out the KN95 masks. And then finally, the point is, if you want to wear a mask, wear it. We love you. We support you in wearing a mask. But I didn't want to see one more six-year-old kid having to go to school another day in a mask that was useless. This is not the bubonic plague. It's not killing our children. And we've just about destroyed our economy fiddling around with coronavirus. Do I care? Yeah. I mean, people have died. And it means, it's important that we do all we can. But Omicron is different. And so we felt like it was a political football, and it had to be laid to rest. So whether you agree with me or not, I get it. But that's why we did what we did. All right.
Representative, I have a text from a resident who said, who wants to see if you know the answer to this. Based on a series of interactions between Draper City and the Boyer Company, it is anticipated that the Boyer Company is expecting action this year, in this year's legislative session, that will prevent cities from controlling the residential density of future development. It doesn't have a House bill. It was just texted to me from a resident. Do you know anything about this one?
No, I know the Boyer Company, and it wouldn't surprise me. Big builders do not like cities interfering. So Horton is furious about residents of Salem actually having an opinion.
Right. Well, and this says that in this bill, the city must grow by a certain percentage every- Well, and this says that in this bill, the city must grow by a certain percentage every year to get state funding for B and C road funds.
I haven't heard anything about that, but I hate it.
Haven't yet either. So I don't think it would be something that we would want down here, but I just wanted you to have that on your radar from a resident who's not here.
I think it's illogical to allow a developer to have the say and have the city not have any input. I mean, does anybody like that? Anybody, except for the Boyer Company? I don't think so. And I know, well, so I don't know if any of you went to the D.R. Horton thing. I was doing redistricting, getting bludgeoned by the folks in Moab and Park City, because I wouldn't give them a district they could win. But what happened is, the Horton guy said, okay, fine, if you want to, you know, oppose this, we'll just have Spanish Fork annex this. I don't know if you heard that. And so I went to Spanish Fork and said, don't you dare annex those guys. Let this thing play out. Citizens need a voice in it. So anyway, I'll look into that, Carrie. I've not heard anything like that. Now, just so you know, the bills are super slow this year. I don't know why. We're going to get slaughtered in about two weeks. We're going to get, we're going to be there till 12 o'clock every night because they're just not coming out of the Legislative Fiscal Analyst Office. So I can't tell you why that is. We're just slow this year.
That might be good.
And maybe, and maybe. I mean, we're going to look at 1,000 bills. It might be good, it might be good if we didn't get to look at them all.
We just don't have enough people to do all that legislative work.
Well, I think we've been slow. I think some of the legislators have been slow getting their stuff in, and they're waiting. I mean, what a lot of them do, so just so you know the way this process works, I have an idea for a bill. I call my drafting attorney. We draft the bill. One of the first questions they ask is, do you want this to be released to the public or do you want it to be held private for now? Hold it for now. I'm still getting some data and trying to decide how I want to approach this. Many legislators, laytors have not released stuff yet because, for a variety of reasons, maybe they think they can't get it through. You know, like I had a bill that I was going to do on cameras in schools, classrooms. Think about that for a minute. Are you going to get that through? Probably not in my lifetime because of the privacy issues of the students. Yet we have police officers wearing cameras, and you may have seen that Lehigh teacher that was just off the, did you see that on YouTube? Off her rocker. And the way that was captured was with some student's phone. And so, but I knew that that bill could never get through committees, so I held it. And then I put it, set it aside. But we have a bunch of bills sitting there that haven't been released to the public yet. So that one could be one of those.
Yeah, maybe. But we really, really appreciate you coming and answering our questions.
Did I sound like a politician? I'm sorry. I don't, I do not want to sound like a politician.
No, we appreciate your service and taking time at this busy season to come and give us the update. And Doral, hopefully your questions were addressed and the context was provided.
And make sure you let Senator McHale, we understand that, why he couldn't be here. We appreciate his service as well.
He's a good guy. Let me give you my cell phone number, and I mean it. I want you to text me or call me. This isn't my legislative cellphone, it's my personal. And if I can't answer it, I will get back to you on your question. And I'll try to get more fidelity on the things you've asked me. Doral, I'm afraid I didn't help you at all to be comfortable with ADUs. I apologize for that. I think you guys have to tailor it to Woodland Hills and the best you can without violating the state statute, and I don't think you will. Short of refusing to allow them, that would be the one thing you probably shouldn't do.
Which is what we're doing.
Then we're done.
Yeah.
No.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, thanks, guys. Can I leave now? Or you want to lynch me? Dave, let's go duke it out. Anyway, we love you, and feel free to call me. That, to me, that was the main reason I ran, is folks were just, I heard so often, nobody listens to me. And we're not always going to agree, but I'll always listen and do so respectfully. Right? Thank you.
Thanks again.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Okay. In the interest of time, because we're going to, I'm going to move for a closed session after, if you saw the email that we reported by the Fuges, I would like to discuss that briefly, but, so I would like to move forward. I know you had a few points, Carrie. Can they wait till the next meeting?
No, because they're happening this week. So I just wanted to remind you that Congressman Owens is coming here on Friday night, and he would like to meet with the mayor and council at 4:45 if possible. His event starts from 5:00 to 7:00. He's going to have a, kind of the first half hour will just be a meet and greet to get to know the residents of Woodland Hills, and then from 5:30 to 6:30 will be his town hall, answering questions, that part. Uh-huh, it's in the big room. And we will be zooming that 5:30 to 6:30, and then he will stay afterwards for a few minutes, maybe a half an hour to answer additional questions. But I just wanted you to know that we were going to meet in the council room with him prior if we wanted some one-on-one time and also maybe a picture. And then to also remind you that Bills and Bagels is on Saturday morning. Breakfast starts at 7:15 a.m. with the program starting at 7:30, and that is with all of the South County legislators, and it's at the Nebo School District Boardroom. Free breakfast, and you can come, and you can ask extensive questions, and all of them will talk about their bills. So again, that's on Saturday morning. So I just wanted to remind you of those opportunities.
Okay, thank you. All right. Well, we will adjourn the work session, and we've already had our break, so we'll jump right into tonight's city council meeting with a pledge by Councilmember Hilliard.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And then invocation by Councilmember Malkovich.
Dear Heavenly Father, we're grateful for the opportunity we have together, together this evening. We're grateful for our town and the blessings that Thou hast bestowed upon us. We are thankful for our residents and for the passion and dedication they have to helping us keep this town functioning and helping us make good policy to direct our services and our growth. Please bless us this evening as we make decisions that we can do so with Thy guidance, and we say these things in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Thank you. Okay, public comments. Do we have anyone here that would care to make a comment? All right. Jody, is there anyone over Zoom? Okay. We will move on then to business and discussion. Item 15, Ordinance 202203, adopting City Code 10171, accessory dwelling units.
Given that it's already passed to the state, I'll make a motion that we pass that.
I'll second that.
Okay. We have a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Okay, that's Councilmember Malkovich, Councilmember Hilliard, and Councilmember Pratt voting in favor, and Councilmember Kinnaston voting opposed. Motion carried. Item 16, Resolution 202208, confirming support for science-based conservation, restoration, and enhancement of Utah Lake.
I will motion that we accept that resolution as stated.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Opposed.
Okay, so we have Councilmember Malkovich, Councilmember Hilliard, and Councilmember Kinnaston voting in favor, and Councilmember Pratt opposed. Motion carried. Number 17, Resolution 202209, approval of November check dispersments.
I'll make a motion to approve that.
I'll second that.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Okay, and then further to our discussion earlier, the appointment of Paul MacArthur to the Public Works Committee.
So since.
It's not on the agenda.
It's not on the agenda.
Okay, so we can't do that this week?
So we can't do that.
Okay, well, we'll make it an upcoming agenda.
But yeah, we just, I wasn't sure.
No, I appreciate that because it's in the business or the work section, so I thought maybe that qualifies.
It has to be on the agenda.
It has to be on the agenda.
Thank you for that clarification. Okay, and then the same would be true with the Roads Committee moving forward with the drainage study. All right, very good. Well, then that is all.
Then we want to move to, you want a motion to go into a closed session?
Do we adjourn first, or do we?
No.
Okay.
Yeah, this is a weirdness, but basically, we're still in council meeting.
Okay.
And give it like a recursive software loop. We go into a closed session.
I'd rather it like that.
And then we come out of the closed session, and then we adjourn.
Okay, all right.